Welcome to the Committee of the Whole meeting, today being Monday, October 30th. Madam Clerk, if we could have resolutions to call the meeting to order, please.
It's moved by Councillor Bergeron, seconded by Councillor St Pierre, that the meeting of the Committee of the Whole, the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas and Glengarry be hereby called to order.
All those in favor, opposed, seen none, that's carried. And, Madam Clerk, the resolution for approval of the agenda.
Through you, Mr. Warden, we have had a request to move the final item, 5.9, Warden Term of Office, to 5.1, to the first item of business.
Yes, thank you.
So it's moved by Councillor St Pierre, seconded by Councillor Dencham, that the agenda be approved as amended.
All those in favor, opposed, seen none, that's carried. And any disclosures of pecuniary interest and general nature thereof, seeing none. So today's Committee of the Whole meeting will be comprised almost entirely of staff reports, and as we move through the staff reports, or KIRs, the staff will be providing overviews of the level of service that is currently taking place, and then after each report, we can have a discussion, questions, comments, and if there's a feeling that there's alterations needed, then we'll do a quick straw poll and have more information prepared for another meeting. Thank you. So at this point, we're going to start with 5.1, oh, did we suggest, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, at what point did you suggest 5.9? 5.9, please.
Through you, Mr. Warden, as you'll see outlined in my report on page 29 of your agenda package, currently the term of office for the Warden at the United Counties of SDG serves for one year. A councillor may only be Warden for a maximum of two consecutive terms, so they can serve back-to-back consecutive terms. If council wanted to change the term of office for the position of Warden, staff could bring forward amendments to the procedural bylaw. Thank you.
So, discussion, questions, comments. Councillor Gaynor.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, good morning, everyone. I'm definitely in favor of amending the term. I think it should be a two-year term with the initial, the initial term being coinciding with the first two years of the county council term, and then at the midterm, having another two years. This isn't, this isn't uncommon, there's other municipalities that do this in Eastern Ontario. I think there's a few benefits of this. Number one, just from an onboarding standpoint, if there's a Warden that hasn't been in that position before, staff reteaching that individual, or going through that learning process every year just seems redundant. In addition to that, as Councillor McDonald alluded to when he was running for the position this year, a big role of the Warden is to build and maintain relationships, and having that continuity in office, so that the head of our council can build, build those relationships, maintain those relationships with his, his peers and the other levels of government, I think is very important. Also, I think delaying the decision any longer just puts the organization, our residents, at a disadvantage. It would be much easier for us, well, it hampers our ability currently not to have a two-year Warden position, to obtain positions like the Chair of the Eastern Ontario's Warden Caucus. I don't know if any member of this council ever chaired that position, and I think if we had some continuity in office that would help us move into those roles, if someone was interested in doing that. And then finally, I just look at this year, when it comes to our strategic plan, we put a lot of effort into that, and we need some time in office to allow someone to not only preside over the plan, but to implement the plan, so having sufficient time to follow through with those initiatives with the same head of council leading the charge. I do think this role was originally more traditional, it was traditionally more ceremonial in nature, and now it's transitioned into a true head of council role, so I really do think we should look at having a longer term. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Councillor, Councillor McDonald.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'm not going to disagree, I think that two-year terms would be worthwhile. I guess I don't think that we should be starting it next term, I think it should start with a, with a brand-new council when we turn over in 2028. My question is, is, and you know, we just had this discussion, and I asked the current Warden, you know, could he do, could he have done a second term? And, you know, he said, yes, I think so. It's, it is a big commitment, and you, you don't know that till you've done it. Councillor Williams can attest to that, you're, you're away a lot of the time, it's a, it is a very challenging position. So my question is, what happens, and this is what we were just talking about in the back, what happens if after one term, somebody decides that they've, it's, they've had enough, and they, they don't want to run for that, they don't want to be there for the second term?
Councillor Gaynor, I see you've given this lots of thought.
I have, thank you, Mr. Warden. Appreciate the comments, and I understand it is a huge burden, one that I haven't had taken on myself, but I look at any, you could say that with any role, you know, I look at the, the Mayor of Cornwall, it's, it's a four-year term, and, and you go into that position maybe not knowing what the commitment is, and it might be too much, and I understand that, that burden, but I just look at, if we look at, you know, pull back the, the personal component for the individuals around this council, whether or not they may be able to do it from a personal standpoint, I think it is best for the organization and for the region to have continuity in that office.
And Councillor McDonald, your continued thought on that, and then Councillor Williams, thank you.
So my thought to that is, a hundred percent, you, you take it for two years, in your mind, you're committed for two years, but I, I'll tell you, there's, there's times when you come home and your family is not happy with you, you've been gone for seven consecutive days, you're away six ti, six, seven, eight times during the year, for more than two days, so what do you do when somebody, that's my question, is if somebody just says, I can't do it for a second year, we need to be ready for that, because it's, and it's not the same as being the mayor. You, I've committed to four years, yes, it can be a difficult, I can leave after two years if I, if it's, if it's doing something with my family and somebody will take over. My point is, we need to be prepared for that, because as most of us are mayors and deputy mayors around this table, we are busy in our municipalities, and sometimes we don't understand the commitment that's, that's ahead of us. So I, I just think that, I, I agree, two years, but we need to have a backup plan if somebody decides after one year that they can't continue. That's just my.
Thank you, Councillor, Councillor Williams?
Yeah, I, I, I agree with everything that's been, been said here, I think we do need, we need the, the, the Chair of the United Counties to be a dedicated, a more dedicated position, because it is, as I experienced, a big responsibility, it's a rewarding responsibility, but it's, it's big, and you, you have to have the time to be able to do it, but I think that anybody who was seriously thinking about stepping into this role would, would have to have that conversation with themselves, like, you know, can I realistically do this? Should I realistically do this, and I'm prepared to make that commitment? And if they are, I would think that they could manage the two years. I was just about to suggest four years, but I don't think I will under the circumstances. Ideally, I think it would be a four-year position, because then it would align with the term of council, and, you know, and, and it could be an elected position that would really provide that consistency over time, but under the circumstances, I, I think, you know, one step at a time, to try out the two years, with the thought that perhaps it, it could in time be changed to a four-year term, and could be elected as such. You know, maybe eventually the, the role could be elected in, in the general municipal election, a person could decide to run for the position of, of Warden, and it could be elected by every, every resident of SDNG, that's, it's a, it's a possibility, and that way it is a position that isn't elected just by, you know, twelve county councillors, it's, it's a truly elected, democratically elected position. But that's, like I said, that, that's possibly down the road. I would also like to consider, and maybe this can come back in a, in a staff report, looking at changing the title, because, you know, the Warden is, it's, it's a very, you know, historic title, and it had probably great meaning 150 years ago, but I, I find that it is, it's, it's a bit of a, a title that is a bit of a throwback, and really doesn't have probably the, the, the modern feel that, that it should have. I mean, after all, the, the role is chairing county council, and I could see that the title, you know, could be changed to be more appropriate, so that people don't walk up to you and say, where's the prison that you're the Warden of? You know, that may be a bit of a stretch, and people may not be comfortable with that, but, you know, we need to change with the times, and modernize our organization, with that comes titles that are appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor, we are going to go to the, Mark St, Councillor St Pierre, Councillor Dencham, Councillor Broad, did you have your hand up, then Councillor Bergeron, and then Councillor Gaynor.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and it's really a question more than just a, a comment, it's a question for you, Mr. Warden, and maybe our past Wardens, we have a Warden, and we have a Deputy Warden, correct? So I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering, how much do you rely on your Deputy Wardens to, to help with the burden, to help with the load, and maybe burden's not the right word, but just to help with the, with the extra load that, that's required as a Warden, because I'm just thinking out loud here, is, is, just if we do go to a two, a two-year term, if that's, that's what we need to do, is kind of rely more on our Deputy, Deputy Wardens to assist with, with the heavy workload that it takes to not only be, be a Warden, but to be a mayor, be a Deputy Mayor? I know that, and I'll refer to them as Mayor Broad and I, we, we are kind of a one-two punch a little bit, that we rely on each other to, to attend different functions, committees and meetings, so I'm just, again, I'd like to get educated a little bit on how much a Deputy Warden is, is involved during the term, for you, Mr. Warden, and maybe Councillor McDonald and others.
Thank you. So I have relied on the, the deputies' end to, to support, but my mind, again, not again, my, my, my thought is that if you've taken on the role, you've taken on the role, and you've taken on the challenge, and you've committed to that challenge of doing that, and sometimes, it's unfortunate that you can't be in three places at once, and so you do need other support, and, and you, you communicate with the clerk, and you have support from the clerk, and the CAO, as to best managing those challenges, and it's, it's an effort to, it's a, it's a group effort, a team effort to make sure that things are looked after in the proper fashion, so that does go on, but again, it's, it is a commitment that someone puts their hand up, it's a commitment that we put our hands up to be the mayors or the deputy mayors and represent our communities, and, and we do go to great lengths, I'm sure all of us go to great lengths to make sure we do that. So you're looking for other responses from other past Wardens, I think we have a couple here.
So the, the, the position has changed recently, now it's the past Warden that is the Deputy Warden. When I was Warden, the, we had a Warden of the Month, so everybody signed up, whoever wanted to do it, and if there are events I couldn't attend, we called the Warden of the Month to see if they would be able to attend them, so that's how it was done. When I was just getting on to county council, it was actually the, you voted for the Deputy Warden, and the Deputy Warden became the next Warden, so it was, the Deputy Warden had a little bit more of a position, because they knew they would be taking over for the Warden.
Councillor Williams?
Thank you, yeah, I, I've, on occasion, the Warden has, has asked me to step in for something that he wasn't able to attend, and that, that certainly isn't a problem, you know, you know, I think there, there needs to be another person there that can fill in as necessary, because as, as Warden Fraser pointed out, you can't be in two places at once, you just can't be. So, so I think that works fairly well, I, but that's just attending events, but otherwise, you know, and, and it's not like, it, it isn't a, just a ceremonial role, like there is, there is real work involved, and, and that really is largely on the, on the shoulders of the Warden, but in, in terms of attending events, I, I was asked by, by Maureen to, to attend some Remembrance Day, and because the Warden can't, unfortunately, I can't, because I'm doing my own Remembrance Day, so these things are, can be complicated, but yeah, I'm sure that, you know, you've found someone to do it, and, and you're all set, but it, it works out, is what I would say. But it, it, it works out, uh, is what I would say.
Thank you. Um, so now we're going to move over to Counselor Dencham.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Um, I actually still very much like the way that it's presented in the package. The warden has the opportunity to put their name forward. I haven't heard very often that a sta- a sitting warden has put their name forward. I, I know that it has in the past, but I haven't seen it, uh, uh, too often. But the, the opportunity is there for a second term and I, I would say that at that point in time, the, uh, that warden has the opportunity to plead their case, to say, "You know what? I think this particular year continuity would be a good thing. I want to put my name forward for the Wardens Caucus" or something like that and therefore, uh, I, I would hope that I would get the support of the rest of the, the United Council or United, uh, uh, of, of the council. Um, we are basically a collective of, of United Counties and I think if we sit to two years, what it means is that, by default, somebody's not going to get in for 12 years, right? Because that means two years, two years, two years. One group is not. And I think there's a lot of creative, uh, a lot of creativity, a lot of really good, um, uh, deep thinkers around the table and they have, uh, should have an opportunity to, uh, put their name forward as warden during a four-year term. And if there's only going to be two wardens in a four-year term, that's going to lessen the opportunity for, uh, for some creative thoughts to be at the table. So I, I kind of like it this way. If, if a standing warden wants to put their name in for the next year, they have the opportunity to plead their case at this point. But, uh, and again, I, I agree. I, again, this is my first term sitting here, so as yourself, Counselor Gano. So, uh, we're not speaking from experience, we're, we're speaking, uh, from, from just, uh, off the top of our heads on this. But I do recognize that even being a, a deputy mayor and being a mayor is a big job. Being a warden is going to be a big job as well and I'd hate for somebody at the council table who has some really good skills to bring to back off putting their name forward because they're not prepared for two years. They might be able to do it for one year, might be able to bring some real good ideas and bring some really good energy to the table for one year. But if they're going to back off because it's just too big of a commitment, I, I'd hate to see something like that happen. So I, I, like I say, I, I pretty much like the way that it's worded here where it's one year and if the warden wants to sit for a second year, uh, plead their case and if they've done a great job, if we think they're going to be able to, uh, represent us well, then we'll put them in for a second year.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Broad?
Thank you, Warden. Uh, I'm going to echo on a few points Counselor Dencham made. Certainly I appreciate all the comments, certainly a lot of thought processes have, uh, come into this and, uh, appreciate all the time, extra time the warden has to spend throughout our communities. Um, and my question was going to backbone on, uh, Counselor Dencham was, it is in the bylaw today that a council's standing warden can run for a second term, but obviously over the last two or three, that has not happened. Was my question is to those folks, is that because it's more of a ceremonial piece that we change every year? Or, uh, or, or, or just maybe why you hadn't thought about running for a second term?
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll weigh in on that before we move on to the next Counselor, but, uh, it is, it is a very ceremonial. You are attending events, you're, uh, doing the openings and, uh, and there are many requests that the warden attends, uh, certain events, certain functions, uh, banquets, to speak on behalf of all of us and all of, all of SDG. So, so in that respect, it was very ceremonial. Excuse me, but there's also the, uh, the aspect of, uh, the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus, being an advocate at the, uh, the next level of government at the, at the province as well as, you know, dealing with federal ministers and MPs. Uh, so that's not the ceremonial part and that's the part where you need to have that, uh, that, that relationship building. So, you know, you might see them once or twice in a year. If it's someone new in the third or the second year or the next year, then that does change things up. So there is a, a large aspect of ceremonial, but the, the relationship building, the, the, the awareness, the understanding of the challenges, is, uh, is the behind-the-scenes aspect of, of the role. So it's, uh, there is that, uh, that concern out there and, uh, it's a concern, I think, those that have served, excuse me, those that have served one year, uh, and, uh, and I know some have served more than one year, but back-to-back years. Those that haven't served back-to-back years, I'm sure would contend that there's work left to be undone, things left unsaid that you wish to get, uh, presented and you haven't had the opportunity as you've only had the, the six or seven opportunities to discuss those things with the whole of the Wardens Caucus. I think I'm on the right track with that? Counsel, Counselor Williams, uh, we're just answering your question for, uh, uh, Counselor Broad, but then Counselor Gano. It's Counselor Bergeron and then you.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Uh, Counselor Broad, it is, um, yeah, I would, I would say that one of the real downfalls of the one-year term is the fact that it takes a significant period of time to get up to speed, particularly around the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus table where you're meeting these people for the first time, you're figuring out they've got a very complex, um, series of projects that they're working on that go year, from year to year to year. And so when you get around that table, you're, you're immediately doing catch-up. And then by the time you get your feet under you, you're being shuffled out. So it's really hard to really have a significant impact around that table in one year. And it's an important table to be around and they do really, uh, very good work. And, and similarly with the relationship building, you know, you, 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 you start to make those connections and build those, start building those relationships and no sooner do you, again, get your feet under you and you're shuffled out and then somebody is coming in. And they have to start it all over because a new person is a new relationship. It's not, it's not building on, on somebody else's relationship. So that, I would say, you know, and that was to Counselor Gano's point, that's a significant point in this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Williams. Counselor Bergeron?
Okay, my thoughts from the beginning was, um, the one-year term with the option for a second-year term, not having it as an election, saying, "Okay, I am going to stay for a second year." Not having to do with voting, not putting his name in or her name in, the second. As far as continuity, continuity with connections in Toronto, which is a thought that has passed around. We already know that MPPs, their positions can be flipped at any time at the whim of the premier. And, uh, so I don't think that's, that's serious an issue. And so my thought is one year, keep it like that, but option second year without an election, saying, "Yes, I'm okay to stay a second year."
Thank you for your thoughts. Counselor Gano?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Um, if, if, uh, the table hasn't noticed, I'm pretty passionate about the, uh, amending the term to two years. I'm just going to touch on a couple of points that my fellow counselors made, uh, starting with Counselor Dencham's, uh, point. I, I do agree there's a lot of people at this table who could do a very good job in a role and I appreciate that. But if we look at the role itself and how to be effective in that role, it goes, it touches on what Counselor Williams was saying with respect to what's done at the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus. If you, you know, transitioning a file, learning what's been done at a table and having to, uh, keep changing the person that's representing your area, it's just not effective. I look at it in my own role, I'd be changing your lawyer every few months. It wouldn't make any sense, right? It's just you having that same person who has that information can carry it on, carry on that file, know what's been discussed. So there isn't that learning curve. So that's why I'd really like to see that amendment to the, the two years. Additionally, I just want to touch on another point that Counselor, uh, Williams, uh, made with respect to updating, uh, the name of the office. I think that's something that should be considered. I know that our counterparts in the GTA, um, for their, their operative, their regional, um, council, they just call it regional chair. So it's, you know, it'd be an easy, we could call it county chair. I know Prescott Russell, um, for all their correspondence in French, it's president. That's another option. So it's, you know, we're not reinventing the wheel. I know there's some history behind, uh, the, the term warden. But, you know, I look at, uh, I look at, going back to example of, uh, my law practice, the, the Law Society of Ontario was for two-hundred-and-twenty-some years called the Law Society of Upper Canada. But they made the change a few years ago to the Law Society of Ontario so the public could better understand what that organization was and who it represented. So I understand there's a historical component to it, but I do think, you know, for the public's interest, uh, you know, changing that to something that's more recognizable as being the head of this council makes a lot of sense.
Counselor McDonald?
Just to, uh, speak to Counselor Dencham's point, um, you know, just about how many, you know, you could go 12 years and not get the opportunity to run. I'll, I'll tell you that just, you know, looking at the experience of this council and we had, you know, so many new people that were elected. So we really only had myself and Deputy Mayor Williams that, uh, sorry, Counselor Williams, that were previous wardens. On one of my terms when, uh, we finished, uh, we had 10 wardens on council and there was a lot of experience around that council table. So everybody has that shared experience of going to the Wardens Caucus and, and working. One thing that was suggested back then was that the actual warden is elected in August and they attend all the Eastern Ontario Warden Caucus meetings as a, an observer to have a better transition into that role. You've met everybody. So just if, you know, the two-year term isn't what people are looking at, that is a, an opportunity. As far as changing the, the role of warden and just on the Prescott Russell thing, présidente is because they don't, there is no word for warden, but they still call them the warden. And everybody that's at the Eastern Ontario, uh, Wardens Caucus are wardens, except for the two single-tier which are mayors. So, uh, sure, I, you know, I, I like the idea of, uh, regional county chair or whatever, but I think there needs to be a movement through the Wardens Caucus to, to change that thought. You know, I think that's where it should come from and then come down, uh, to the rest of us. Because I, I do agree, I mean, it's, uh, I tell people I'm a warden and I just get the same thing, just what prison are you at? And it's about the County Council, that's a prison, so, just kidding. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Counselor Lang and then it's going to be Counselor Landry and I think then almost everyone's had a chance, except for one. And then we'll leave that up to Counselor McDonald, but Counselor Lang?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you. It's a tough one. I think you're right that it should be a two-year term. But I hate the thought of, I'm looking around the room, how many people have, could commit to that two-year term that are at this table right now? I'm thinking to myself, if I was to, to do it, I'd talk to, uh, you, Mr. Fraser, and you'd said, you know, this year you had to schedule holidays around this job, you know, so do you do that sort of thing for two years? Is, how hard is that on your family? I really like Counselor McDonald's idea of, uh, starting it three months early so that you could get up to speed as an observer. And, uh, but I, I do think it would be better for the counties if it was a two-year term, but it's not going to be very easy for people to do and there's only a limited number of people that will be able to take that time to, to do it. So I'm not really sure when you ask for the straw poll, where are my hands going to go, but, anyway, I just wanted to give my points.
Thank you for your thoughts. Counselor Landry?
Through you, Mr. Warden. Uh, I'll have to echo maybe part some this side of, of the table. No, in regards to, uh, as Counselor McDonald mentioned, the met, the benefit of, as you sit through, uh, a warden for the one-year term, there's, there's experience here that you gain and as you mentioned in the previous council where there was many wardens sitting at the table and discussed. It just brings experience, not just at this table, but also reverts back to all our municipalities, I think, that get the, uh, so the two-year terms, if we speak on behalf of our staff and maybe our past clerk, Mrs. Thompson, could elaborate. So there is times where I'm sure, uh, staff has worked with, uh, better, some depending on the commitment that they were bringing towards the, the role of, of warden. But it's something where you go through one year and you know, okay, we're going through this way here. The commitment, I believe, is, is, uh, a tough task to take on. And if you make it two years, it could be to, to an extent, and I'm not pointing any fingers, but after one year, maybe there's some that would say, "Oh, you know what, it would, a change would be nice." And we, so this way, as Counselor Dencham mentioned, the sitting, uh, warden can put his name in for a second year and plead his case saying how, that much good he's done. And last comment is towards the Wardens Caucus, is there stuff that, uh, that you would have thought maybe would have gained, you would gain more, uh, power at the Wardens Caucus with a two-year presiding? Or does that, how many wardens are sitting at 10, you meant, or no, eight, six, at the Wardens Caucus?
I think it's 13.
So again, I mean, we're talking, it's, it's a big, uh, role that I think with the help of CIO and, and staff at those meetings that, uh, uh, there's also great value there. So I think sta- status quo, staying with, uh, the one-year and the opportunity to go for a second year if, if, uh, the individual wishes to. So that's just a thought.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McDonald?
Thank you. I, I guess I represent some of our, our council stuff, like, so we're, we're, like, the, the ones I've talked to would say two years. And I, I'm probably, like, Counselor Williams said, four years would, would have struck me as something we could do too, but if, two years certainly. And it was a question I asked whenever, whenever we went for our first election was, is it, is it an earned or owed position? So in that regard, like, if you're willing to put your name in for, like, it's a big obligation, so it should be a big, um, commitment in that regard. So I, I think two years honors that, uh, like, it marries those two together. So, so I'm on, on that page. I don't really have anything more to add. Most has all been said.
But I think we all understand where we're at. Some of the things that we're, uh, have been, one of, what's been proposed, if I can make an amalgam of it, is, uh, a, a two-year term with, uh, language that identifies how you would deal with, uh, someone that's not able to fulfill the second year of the term. And, uh, I think that, that covers the two-year proposal. I, I, I was going to quickly look around. I don't think I'm missing anything. It was fairly, fairly succinct, two years and language to look after someone not able to, uh, uh, fulfill the commitment. Can I get a, have a straw poll on that? Any, uh, head nods for that or thumbs up? What I'm proposing, what the, I'm getting, I'm asking for, uh, a raise of the hand or a nod of the head to the thought of a report coming back identifying the process to have a two-year term with language in that that identifies how you deal, how we manage or how the staff manages the, uh, someone that is not able to fulfill the two years, so the election in the, in between. Is that a question, Counselor McDonald?
That's a question. My question is, I think that we should be voting on whether we're going with status quo or we're going for two years. I think that's the direction we need to give to.
You prefer that?
Well, I just, that's the, what's, staff is going to go back on. I don't know what the direction is.
Well, I was going to ask, I was going to get a nod on the first question and then the status quo would be the next question, so. In essence, it would have been a vote. So the two-year with language for the, uh, language for someone that's unable to fulfill or the status quo, to your point? Two-year? So, okay, let's do this once again. Two-year, I, I didn't quickly count. One, two, three, four. And status quo? One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay. Counselor Gano, I appreciate you bringing that forward. I appreciate your, your, your passion for and understand for that, but, uh, council has, uh, made a determination. Madam Clerk, we'll move into the Levels of Service, five-one.
Sure, thank you. Through you, Mr. Warden, if you turn your attention to page two of our agenda package. I have summarized, uh, the levels of service that the Corporate Services Department does provide to the county, both internally and externally. So I'll briefly walk you through that report. Under Clerk Services, uh, we provide the daily statutory duties of clerk in accordance with provincial legislation. We provide direct administrative support to the warden on a daily basis and to council. We also draft all council documents, agendas, bylaws, minutes, resolutions. We put together the agenda packages and facilitate council meetings and various board and committee meetings here at the county. We oversee the Corporation's Accessibility Program under, uh, We oversee the corporation's accessibility program under AODA. We manage freedom of information requests, oversee the county's false alarm program, and the corporate records management program. We also facilitate various county events, such as the Wardens banquet, golf tournament, breakfast here at the county. Looking now to corporate communications, we prepare all forms of communications material for the counties, for internal staff, and for the warden and members of council, for external initiatives as well, and online presence, including media releases, reports, speaking notes, presentations, confidential sensitive correspondence, and all social media and electronic newsletters as well. We also do all the website updates here internally. We collaborate with local municipalities on regional communication efforts, and we create regional social media material for local municipalities as well, to use in their communication efforts. Currently, we are providing direct corporate communications support to the township in North Stormont, which includes regular website updates, we administer the township's social media channels, content creation, streaming of council meetings as needed, and other communication support as required. We coordinate and assist with special projects as required here, including the SDG Historic Plaque Project and the SDG Intranet Project. Looking at emergency management, we develop and maintain the SDG County's emergency plan. We facilitate the SDG County's Community Control Group. We also coordinate with local municipalities with respect to annual emergency preparedness training and exercises to ensure that they meet compliance as well. We actually have our exercise this coming Thursday at North Stormont Place. Human resources, we do have a new human resources manager here at the county that provides internal HR support, and that is also starting to provide external human resources support to our local municipalities. This would include assistance with updating human resources policies, dealing with and helping to investigate certain workplace complaints and investigations, key recruitments, terminations, and also training and development plans. Health and safety, another unit within Corporate Services, helps to develop and administer all health and safety training here at SDG Counties. We support the SDG County's Joint Health and Safety Committee. We investigate or assist in the investigation of workplace accidents and injuries, and we also identify and assess organizational hazards and related risks, and develop relative occupational health and safety programs and policies. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We've all had an opportunity to read this, and then it's just been presented, so are there thoughts about the level of service alterations to it? Counselor Dencham.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, it's, actually, it's more an overarching comment than specific to Corporate Services. When I think about level of service, I kind of think about it from two perspectives. One is the day-to-day deliverables and what we do, which is, I think, what was shared with us, but I also think of it from a ratepayer's perspective, and it may or may not fit this specific area, it may actually, I suspect it will touch many different, many different of the, of the different services that are provided, but I'm wondering if there's an overarching level of service. So for example, a ratepayer reaches out to a specific department with a question, when can they expect some kind of acknowledgement to their request, those types of things? That's what comes to mind when I think about level of service, and it's, it's something that we have to keep an eye on as well at our lower tier. So I'm just wondering whether or not that's something that can be spoken to either independent of or within this. I think it's important, if we do have a level of service at the ratepayer level, when they're interacting with the counties, that it be consistent across the different departments, because then it's simple for us as councillors to say, well, did you give them two business days? Because that's what they need before you're coming and you're complaining that they're not doing, because that's what we've allowed them to be able to sort of, or one business day. So it's just sort of looking more at a level of service of interactions with the ratepayer overarching across the departments.
Thank you, Counselor, Madam Clerk.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair, I think in terms of Corporate Services, the services that directly touch the ratepayers, the residents of SD and G, would predominantly live within communications, online, social media presence, we're getting messages every day through Facebook and other social media outlets. I think people expect more of an instant acknowledgement on those platforms, so we do pride ourselves, we get back to people within 24 hours, within Corporate Services, we try to. I think social media has become instant, and people respect and expect that instant communication.
Just a follow-up, if I may, Mr. Warden, so, fantastic, and I know social media almost demands instant response, but what that can also do is create an expectation for other departments, that they need to get back as quickly as well. So, again, I would just say, give some thought to that, because, again, you're probably going to get kudos if you get back quickly, but that may put pressure on Ben's group, who may get a phone call about, you know, snow clearing or something like that, who don't have the luxury of being able to communicate as quickly or whatever, and I just want, and also for council, for us to be able to go back and say, you know what, the level of service is this, have you given them that amount of time, so that we can, we can basically be the first line of defense for you, should somebody be coming, you know, a little bit, their expectations get a little too high. Thank you.
Counselor Broad.
Yeah, thank you, Warden, through you, I have two questions, Corporate Services. First question is, how are we tracking training documents, the safety documents? Second question is, with the updated strategic plan, we talked a lot about collaboration with the lower tiers, would we be looking at to see some different languages, some more collaboration pieces on all of our services that overlap in Corporate Services?
Through you, Mr. Warden, we have an HRIS system that tracks training and development through Bamboo HR for kind of that day-to-day HR training, and then for our health and safety training, there's another platform, it's a software platform called Biz Trainer, and all of our documents are tracked through there, training can be sent out to staff and tracked that way, so we've got two great platforms that help us track training. In terms of collaboration, yeah, we'd like to ramp up our efforts in Corporate Services, looking forward to keep in line with the strategic plan. In terms of emergency management, our efforts there, and even health and safety too, right? I know that that's something that the local municipalities can struggle with, resources from time to time, so I think reaching out and helping collaborate in those efforts too as well, through our Training and Emergency Management Coordinator, and then our new HR Manager as well, to help out with that.
Further questions for the clerk on this? I just, I had sent an email around, I believe, to each mayor and to the CAO about something that touches to what Counselor Dencham had spoken about, and it speaks of frivolous and vexatious communications that come in, and my concern to Counselor Dencham's, not to his thought, quick replies are always valued, but considered replies are maybe more important in my mind, and then we have that, if we establish a level of service that someone's going to get a reply within 24 hours, and if that's cut in stone, or carved in stone, and then it doesn't happen, then it just leads to further upset by some that may have been identified, or what that email was about. And, and there is a movement out there that SASS time is seen to be very valuable, and the projects they work on is very valuable, and for them to be wrapped up in a dialogue with someone that is not, not talking in a way that's promoting the counties or their local government and being supportive, and, or just simply requesting an answer to a fair question, I'd hate to see that staff have to respond to something that is seen as frivolous by some, in a timely fashion, because then other questions aren't being asked. So I think this, your comment, Counselor Dencham, leads to further conversation and identifying what may be frivolous or vexatious. I just want to bring that up. Counselor Dencham.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, I'll just reply quickly, you know, there's a general rule of thumb, that we don't want to manage by exception, right? So what you're bringing up with the frivolous and vexation, very important, but it tends to be the exception rather than the rule, and we don't want necessarily everybody to have to be unaware of what, of what they can expect from the counties, or even our municipal parties, just because some exceptions deal with it. And I'm not talking about a response, like, an answer within a period of time, we're really talking about an acknowledgement of receipt. And in my opinion, if you've already acknowledged a, one of these exceptional cases, and you said, you know what, we're going to look at it, we're going to get back to you next week, you've set the expectation, there's, even if they follow up two days later with another email, you've already said, we'll get back to you next week, it'll be up to the individual to determine how they want to manage that second email, if they want a reply or not, but they've met their level of service, in my opinion. So I think there's ways to manage around it, is kind of, kind of my point.
Certainly, certainly. Counselor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, you know, I think you, I think you make some good points there, and I think what we're talking about here is customer service, and maybe, I don't know if there's any policy, county policy that addresses customer service, and maybe we should have a look at it, and see what exactly it identifies as expectation for customer service, both internally and externally, and maybe some of what Warden Fraser talked about in terms of frivolous and vexatious can also be embedded in that policy, if that policy exists. Thank you.
Counselor Lang.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you. Just a question, I likely should know, but I don't know, how does it work when we support the lower tiers? Like, you've offered support in human resources, you are currently doing some in Communications in North Stormont, are we charging by the hour, are we just helping out when it's needed, and how do we decide how far we go and how much we do?
Corporate Services does not charge at all, it's just on an as-needed basis, if you need help, we're here, we'll help you. In terms of the Human Resources Manager position, Kristin Summers has met now with all of your local CAOs, so she's already kind of getting back to a few of them on a few matters, helping them out with a few projects, so that'll just be on an as-needed basis as well, and she'll do regular check-ins with them. But comms, we're here to help, Todd has been helping North Stormont now for some time, and he enjoys doing it, but there is no charge.
Can I just follow up? As the lower tiers are getting quite tight, what's, you know, maybe we should have some, something in place, like, what's to say that we don't say, okay, we're going to let you guys look after all our communications and all our HR now, and we're going to save that money and spend it doing some roads? I mean, and I'm seriously thinking, where do we go with this, and what should our role be, and not just for your department, but for all departments? We need to kind of have something, so that we know with the lower tier, what we can expect from the upper tier, and what we should expect, and I don't have a problem with helping out in an emergency, somebody loses a person and they need something done, I think that's great, but is, does that become long-term? Do we, do we kind of, where does it go?
Through you, Mr. Chair, that's a good point, Counselor Lang, right now, it's just a resource issue, there's vacancies, we can help out, I think we're doing that in a lot of different departments as well, but it's a good discussion to have in the future.
Counselor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, I think you make a very good point. When I was warden, I met with all of the directors individually, just to, just to find out exactly, you know, what they, what do they do all day? And it was, I don't think I'm calling anybody out, but I think almost without exception, every director, you know, talked about the value of providing support and services to the municipalities, and that, that is a very important part of their job, and they value it, and the municipalities value it in return. But almost without exception, there was that sort of, where do you draw the line? And how can, you know, a director make sure that they're managing to be a director and get their, all of their work done, despite pressures from the local tier? And I heard it, and it wasn't, they didn't say it was a huge problem, but I could see that it could develop into something that where, it was sort of like, how do I get all of my work done when I'm responsible for, you know, six municipalities and a county, for example, right? So I, maybe there could be some more, you know, definition put in exactly what expectations are, there can be and can't be.
Thank you for your thoughts. Anything further? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, five-point-two, Ms. Russell.
Financial Services is made up of two divisions, there's the Court Services Division and the Financial Services Division. I'm just going to touch briefly on the Financial Services first, and then if you have any questions, then I'll move on to Court. So we manage SDG's resources with fiscal responsibility, we have a $70 million budget, and we take pride in overseeing that budget of every department with responsibility that we do. We provide advice and financial oversight on matters pertaining to the county. Financial Services is made up of five staff members, myself, the manager of finance, we have a payroll and benefits coordinator, and two administrative assistants, one for payroll and one for accounting. We are a mandatory services, service as roles and responsibilities are subject to provincial legislation, such as the Municipal Act, but we do provide accounting support and services to every county department, as well as to local municipalities if required. So just briefly, I divided the levels of service to internal and external. So we do provide daily operational activities, which consists of accounts payable and receivable, and to Counselor Lang's point, or maybe it was Dencham, we do provide accounts payable in, payments in a weekly basis from the date time the invoice is approved, so we have a week turnover for any accounts payable function, as well as receivables. Cash management, we deal with cash management very promptly, for deposits, making sure that the funds go into the, to our bank account in a prompt manner, so we actually benefit from interest. We have strong internal controls, monitoring and oversight of those internal controls. Financial support is provided to every department as needed, through budget, through reconciliations, through different financial analysis, annual budgeting, year-end, and audit, those are all very important tasks that Financial Services takes pride in, and taxation. We do have some obligations regarding asset management, the development, excuse me, the development of SDG's asset management plan, we've passed a policy in 2019, and in 2021, we passed the first part of the asset management plan for the core infrastructure assets. We provide compliance with the regulatory requirements of asset management. Annually, we take care of the capital additions and disposals and accounting for those assets, that is done through our year-end and audit processes, and now we're working on asset retirement obligations. This past year, we passed the policy, and now we'll be working on determining what liabilities to carry on our financial statements with regards to asset retirement obligations. Excuse me. We also provide various activities relating to employees. We have three bi-weekly payroll cycles, one for salary, one for our library branches, and one for our roads department. We provide pension and benefits administration, various remittances on a bi-weekly basis for source deductions, EHT, various payroll reporting obligations, and annual T4s. With regards to financial reporting, as you're all aware, every year it seems we have more financial reporting to complete, it does take a lot of time putting these items together, so we currently report on the regular funding streams like OSIF and gas tax, and the legislative requirement of requirement of having the financial information returned completed by May 31st. We've always completed that by the deadline. We take a lot of pride in having that report done on time, although I know that's a very difficult report to complete, takes a lot of financial analysis through the year-end and audit process. So that's a very time-consuming report to complete. Our financial statements with the auditor, HSTR reporting, some obligations like that. They take, they're done on a quarterly or monthly basis. We also provide the public sector salary disclosure. We enter all of our tax rates and rate shows into OPTA, and I also provide assistance to North Glengarry and South Glengarry with entering those rates for them as well. Any questions on this screen before I move on? So I divided some external levels of service. Currently, this year, we did provide payroll support to North Dundas. They had almost, they had a situation where they had a shortage of staff, and payroll was one of the areas where they needed some support. So we were able to provide payroll for North Dundas for, I would say, a period of a few months. We also provided accounts payable support to South Glengarry in a staff shortage. We were able to remote in through the remote desktop, through VADAM, and not actually have to physically go to the location, but we're able to provide that type of support, thanking Mike for getting us that remote connection and the support we needed to get through. We've provided some support to help with the implementation of online timesheets, the design and implementation phase for North Dundas, and we're working on North Starmont with them as well. And we've completed that in-house first, so we've got the background information we needed in order to help the other local municipalities with that project. Again, I mentioned OPTA tax rates, entering those tax rates for South Glengarry and North Glengarry before they submit for approval. And we do have VADAM training that we complete when needed, and we've recorded videos that will help other municipalities. And when there's new staff, we reach out and we set up any VADAM training that's required. I also participate in various discussion forums and working groups, such as the Ministry of Finance, OMPF Resource Group, EOWC Treasures Group, our local SDG Treasures Group, the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing Eastern Ontario Treasures Group, and monthly MFOA discussion forums. So moving on to Court Services, did anyone have any questions or comments about Financial Services?
Yes, Ms. Russell. I was just, maybe you touched on it, maybe I missed it, but the online timesheet design implementation, is that going to go throughout SDG?
It's, it will go to those who would like to implement it. It's not something that's a requirement, it's just if municipalities want assistance in implementing online timesheets to make efficiencies, it's not always like a one-size-fits-all. We would have to, you know, the assistance we would provide would deal with ensuring that we understand the organizational structure, the pay grid, how the, how VADAM works with, in terms of chart of accounts and GL codes and things like that. So we would have to do each one individually because they're not all the same. But if municipalities do want to implement the online timesheets, it would be something that the counties, it's paid for under our VADAM, our VADAM, the county VADAM.
Thank you. Counselor Broad.
Yes, through you, Warden. Question, Rebecca. What function, and you specifically have it set out in this document, that your department would look at in looking for cost savings, working with departments on budgetary items, et cetera? Maybe you could talk a little bit about that area.
Okay, so some efficiencies we've made that have, maybe not in terms of costs, cost savings, but allowed us to provide our service and resources to be able to give to others. We have implemented Bamboo HR about, I would say, two years ago, and made continuous enhancements towards Bamboo HR. And what that has done has, it's created efficiencies where employees can manage their data, submit their absence requests, deal with their absence tracking, they have access to documentation such as their performance reviews, their training. If they enter it there, they can upload, they can get their T4s or pay slips. So we've made improvements that way, where the employee is actually can manage their information and can retrieve their information. And it's become more digitalized so that it's not as much manual work in the payroll side, so we can start providing assistance to other municipalities, like the online timesheets, and, you know, providing other support in other ways. We've also, like, in terms of VADAM, tried to make improvements in areas like, for instance, there is a process through the Bank Montreal called Digital Check Service. It's something that we've been working on, and VADAM has been, we just received a kit update that should include that. It's been difficult to get that going, but the Digital Check Service is a means that provides an anti-fraud mechanism for checks that are issued by the municipalities and by the county, where we upload a file similar to an EFT file, where the bank will screen them and be able to detect fraud before the check goes through, because we know there's a lot of check fraud. So that's something that we are going to test at the county side, make sure that through the implementation process, that everything works fine, and then we'll be able to assist municipalities with getting that out as well. As we know, check fraud is on the rise, and it's very difficult sometimes to even detect some of these things. Fraud is intended to be difficult to find, so it's one of the things that we want to get out very promptly. So that would be an efficiency that's being made, that saves time later, so that we can focus our efforts on other items that are important as well. That, I mean, there's so many I could talk about where we may, okay. Good?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so I'll just touch on Court Services, which is, we're responsible for all the court administration and court support functions under the Provincial Offenses Act, as mandated by the Ministry of Attorney General. The POA governs all non-criminal offenses, and the key services would include ticket administration of Part I and Part III informations, setting up court trials, the administration of court, documentation, disclosure, things like that, prosecution services, early resolutions, fail-to-respond dockets, extensions of time to pay, and various collection activities on those outdated fines. Early resolutions, I don't, early resolutions are a mechanism where the prosecutor can discuss with a defendant an early resolution opportunity, so it avoids going to court and using up judicial services if it's not required. It gives an opportunity for both parties to come to a resolution ahead of time. Fail-to-respond dockets are tickets that have gone into, under conviction with, after 45 days of non-payment or non, if a defendant doesn't elect to make a choice of what to do, there's three options at the back of the ticket. Should none of that happen, the fine is convicted under something called a fail-to-respond docket. That is now completed in-house by our manager of Court Services or myself. And extensions would allow a defendant to pay for their fine over time if it takes, if they need some help or financial assistance. We provide that opportunity for them to pay their fine in payments, as well as collections. We have a collections officer who deals with four collection agencies and deals with the defendants to make arrangements. Court Services is made up of eight staff members, including the prosecutor, manager of Court Services, Court Service representatives, as well as the Court Service Assistant who maintains the reception desk. We are also classified as a mandatory service, as roles and responsibilities are subject to provincial legislation, including the Provincial Offenses Act, Emergency Management Civil Protection Act, Ministry Attorney General, Official Languages Act, and French Language Services Act, as we are designated a bilingual court. Just to briefly outline the Court Service levels of service, we have a prosecutor who is responsible for coordinating preparation and prosecution of all cases before the Ontario Court of Justice for Part I offenses. And I have talked to counsel before about the Part III anticipated download that is probably going to be coming very soon, which our prosecution will also be overseeing those, relevant provincial and federal statutes and applicable municipal bylaws. The convictions under fail-to-respond dockets, extensions and reopenings are now completed by court administration, which would be the manager of Court Services or myself. Administrative duties, including pre- and post-court administration and supporting the justice of the peace during court proceedings, collecting on defaulted fines, maintaining the collection database, interviews with debtors, and taking legal action to enforce judgment run required. Our customer service replies to emails and phones within one day. And Court Service manages the front desk reception for all of SDNG administration and for customers entering the facility. Any questions?
Counselor Landry, then Counselor Lang.
Through you, Mr. Warden. So it's not really about the report, but the comment you just made about the Part III, so is that going to make any, because I believe our bylaw enforcement, often I overhear, and I mean, I'm no expert, but I overhear where we could go to a Part III. And right now, are you saying that's at the provincial level, and it potentially could be coming down to our level, to the counties?
So the prosecution of Part III's is not completed by our municipal prosecutor. The prosecution of Part III's is completed by Ministry of Attorney General Crown. That process will be coming down to us. The administration or the issuance of Part III's is something different.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Lang.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you. Not so much on your department, but it sounds like Court Services manages the front desk. It drives me crazy that the front desk is on the third floor. It just, it's not very welcoming when you walk in this building and you have to climb three sets of flares or hit an elevator to go and try to find somebody to talk to to tell you where to go. When I just, if someday in the future it's possible, it should be something when you walk in that door, that somebody's there with a smiling face to direct you where you need to go.
We have had that conversation multiple times around the director's table. It's a very old building, and coming up with a mechanism or a way to make it, you know, in a more efficient location is something that we have had multiple conversations about.
Yes, we have conversations about making an old building a new building. That's the conversation. Further questions for Ms. Russell? Further thoughts? Seeing none, thank you very much. Mr. Saint-Hurges.
Good morning, and through you, Mr. Warden. So as per the report, the IT Services provides, obviously, services to internal SDG departments, as well as to all local municipalities to a certain extent. We do have a memorandum of understanding that was enacted four years ago, it's due to be renewed this December. And within that memorandum of understanding, there are service levels that are laid out. You know, typical IT things like, you know, we will respond within 30 minutes of getting a ticket if your system is down, we'll try to fix, resolve your problem within four hours, depending on the, how many people are impacted, or what the request is. So the initial point of contact in IT is our IT Service Desk, so they will triage any tickets or emails or requests. And if it's deemed to be an incident where people can't do their job, obviously, we're going to respond a lot quicker than if it's just a request to get a new mouse or a keyboard or whatever. So we always do strive to respond within 30 minutes to the request, and then set that to Counselor Dencham's point, set that expectation that, you know, if you require us to buy a printer on your behalf, then, you know, it might take four or five days to get that device in for you and then have it set up. So going through the, I guess, the services, and if you look on page 10 of your agenda, the chart presented there highlights the different services and who currently asks for those services. So every local municipality did sign on to the MOU, but not everybody uses our services to the same extent. So I talked about the IT Service Desk already, the onsite technician. So we do have a technician that does go around on a, we try to schedule as much as possible so to have consistency, but the challenge we have here is the amount of resources we have. So this resource is typically ad hoc and on-demand, so when somebody asks us to have some onsite help. So that is one area where we can improve, but I'll talk to that a little bit later. We do procure, so we have good relationships with a lot of vendors, and purchasing agreements with different vendors. So a lot of local municipalities ask us to, and we prefer if the purchasing goes through us, that way we can make sure there's a certain standard of equipment across the local municipalities. We maintain server network infrastructure, both here on-site and at the local municipalities we provide that service to. Obviously, security is very important, so that's part of the whole package. And then on the less technical side, we also have a resource that does a lot of project management. So it's not just a technical service that we provide, but we do implement and maintain business systems. One of the biggest ones, we host VADAM for five of the six local municipalities, so that's, we host websites for three local municipalities. And we also do special projects and project management. So it seems like every year, every local municipality has a big project, and we have been able to do a big project in every local municipality every year. And it looks like North Starmont will be next year when they move to their new building. I think we'll have a little bit of a work to do there. But what we are trying to get away from is large construction and renovation projects for the hardwiring and putting in the rough-in of wiring and networking. That's, that takes a lot of time, and our resources are more specialized to managing the servers and the network devices themselves, but we felt that it wasn't a value add to go and start pulling wires across buildings. You can get local contractors, electricians, whatever, to do that for, you get more value out of that anyway. So before, I just want to touch a little bit on the funding as well. That's not in the report, but we just put in my draft budget, so next year it's approximately one and a half million dollars, and that includes our building, our share of the building expenses, as well as our support from finance, payroll, and other departments. So what I want to note, though, is that about $795,000 of that is redistributed to the internal SDG departments. So that is the cost we had estimated that, you know, the finance, transportation, all the other departments require from IT. And the remaining $700,000 or so, that's left in the IT budget, and that represents a little bit of IT overhead, but the services we provide to the local municipalities. So while our service is fully funded through the levy, we don't have a direct chargeback. It's almost 50/50 what is kept, or I guess allocated to SDG departments, what is allocated to the services we provide to the local municipalities. So I just want to touch a bit on the onsite technician. So I've heard, since I've started actually, CAOs and other local staff don't want their staff doing IT at, you know, setting up computers and that kind of stuff. But we just don't have the resource to be able to have somebody on-site, you know, once a week or even twice a week. But what I've seen in other local, in other counties, is that if local municipalities want to have that service, then the county hires the employee. It's a county employee, but they're 100% dedicated to the local municipality that wants them, and it's directly charged back. So if there is a desire to enhance that service, that's one way we can handle it to make sure that the municipality receiving the service pays for the service. But we're not, you don't have a one-off IT employee, and succession planning is not an issue for you, management of that employee is not an issue for you, and it provides really good continuity of service from all the other services we provide if that employee is a county employee. And if that employee is sick or decides to leave, then we have that backup right there, ready to go. So that's just something, you know, I've been thinking about how we can solve that problem, and, you know, it could be something that we talk about. We do have a bit of capacity to expand our service, if you will, but not a whole lot. We're a little bit elastic, but we're pretty, pretty full right now. We're a little bit elastic, but we're pretty, pretty full right now. Yeah, and that's, yeah, that's our IT service, I guess.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Counselor Broad, then Counselor Dencham.
Thank you, Warden, through you. A couple of questions, Mr. St. Olm, and a comment. Super pleased with the service so Dundas do get. When we call, we need help. It's immediate, so super happy with that. When we have our onsite technician, massive amount of work to get done and I'm super appreciative of that and want that to continue without taking on an IT person. So do not want to upper any budgets, whether this one or my own, to do that. I think you should continue to build capacity and productivity through your projects to build more time and to continue to collaborate with the local municipalities, as we would certainly appreciate a few more hours of time, you know, which may be an investment to decrease hours in the future as we come online. My question, Mr. St. Olm, is how many staff members do you have today?
Currently, including myself, we're Department of six. We do have one vacancy right now, just new, first day without that person, and we're actively recruiting. So we have our IT service desk technician that's dedicated to getting that first line call. And we have our IT technician that goes onsite. Then we have the IT system specialist that maintains much of our server network infrastructure security services. Then we have our IT systems coordinator that does a lot of the purchasing and manages the day-to-day. And then we have our business assistant coordinator that does all the project management. And then there's myself.
Thank you, Counselor Dencham.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you. So thanks, Mike, for the presentation. This, IT is always a bit of a black box type of, at least for the average person. When you look at IT services at the, at the local level, in my younger days, when I was a little more naive, I might have been the type of person who would be tempted to go rogue at a municipality. But we've, we've seen that. Like our, the last term, we recovered from the previous term where council decided to go their own path with IT. It was a lot of work, a lot of expense, highly difficult to support. So I'm highly in favor of IT services supporting us at the lower tier. Of course, that's the decision of each council. But I think if we're well set up, if your department is well set up to present that every term, at the beginning of the term, to help people appreciate what it means when you go rogue and what level of service you can provide. And again, what options municipalities might have. As you pointed out, you could hire a local IT person, but maybe there's something in between that where you could say, you know what, for an added fee, we can, we can hire that because somebody else only needs a quarter resource. You guys look like you need a quarter additional resource. Maybe we get together and look at bundling that together so you can hire one resource to provide some additional resources to the, to the individual lower tiers. I just think the service you provide is very much foundational and it does our municipality good to know that you're there to support us. And if, like I say, I just can't underpin enough to say, you need to be, if you're going to go off script, you need to be really, really sure what you're doing. Otherwise, you could end up in a very difficult position that you end up coming back to Mike to try to help you fix. And so again, very supportive. And if you can help continue to guide us on a path that will keep us in touch with what the trends are, what the newer technology is, and help each, each new council as they come onboard to appreciate that, I think that will save a whole lot of unintentional work for various councils.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, Mr. St. Olm, a comment or a reply?
If I may, just add one thing. I do really appreciate the, the support the IT department has had and the commitment from the local municipalities. One thing that escaped my mind while I was speaking is that the, it's important for any shared service to have that commitment from the local municipalities before we build it. So we can't, we can't come and ask for a budget to build a service that nobody wants. It's, that's why I think the MOU that we signed four years ago is really foundational to the service we can offer, because it set the expectations, the desires, and then, then we're able to come to council and present that package. And so here are the resources we need to meet the obligations that we have under this MOU and the desired services from the local municipality. So I think that, that commitment from the local municipalities really helped us to build the service that we're providing. Without that, it'd be really difficult to do that. So I appreciate that commitment.
Thank you. Counselor St. Pierre.
Yeah, through you, Warden. I appreciate that. Appreciate the report. It's very informative. Just to follow up with Counselor Broad's question also, you have six staff plus one. But how, do you have a ballpark of what's, how much time do you spend internally working, working inside the counties versus outside to the municipalities? And how many staff do we actually serve inside the municipality? And we have six, but how many total staff would we serve?
So at, when we, when we look at the budget, every year gets a little bit more accurate, but we're looking close to about a 60/40 split. So 60, well, maybe 55, 45 split. The internal is a little bit more, we, and the, the external, I guess, a little bit less. But at last count, we had approximately 200 user accounts that we managed. So I think that depending on the industry, we are a little light on the resources that we have for that, that amount of users. It's, so we're, we're supporting quite a few users per, per staff. And keep in mind, too, that it's not, not all six of us are providing that frontline support. Like as a director, you know, we do more of the strategic, I help with the project management. But when you look at your technician to end user ratio, we're actually, you know, we're pretty, pretty lean when it comes to that. So I think the, the staff really work hard and we try to be as efficient as possible. Like we did implement a new help desk software system that really helps to streamline and automate things. So we're always, we're always looking for efficiencies, but at the end of the day, sometimes you just got to drive out to local municipalities and, and play with the keyboard, play with the mouse and whatever, so.
Thank you, Counselor McDonald.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Warden. As a user for many years and also a few different municipalities, I must say, kudos on the email security setup of office. We've always been good for that. And I'd say IT is one of those things, when it works almost all the time, you don't hear about it, but at one moment, you've been very responsive there. If I may, I know that the counties like to receive things through emails from, from the user level service side. If that 328 number could be maybe hunted, so if you don't get that number, you get the next one. Because in those moments, you don't want to call, you know, 328, 323. That would be the only thing from a user side. But otherwise, everywhere I've been, I've been pretty appreciative of what you do.
Further thoughts, discussion items? I just, it's a question maybe you're not able to answer, Mr. St. Olm, but the MOU you mentioned, does every department have an MOU with the lower tiers?
I wouldn't say every department. I think the, the, I guess the closest would be planning, where there is a set schedule of what they do and what they charge, whatever else. But I, the, just from an IT perspective, the MOU was, was important for us, again, just so that we, we had commitment from the local municipality so we can go out and seek resources and, and hire staff and put things in place to serve. So one of the things, you know, I think about when I hear these conversations is a lot, a lot of things are, there's a lot of conversation about collaboration and wanting to share services. I'm fortunate because we have an MOU and it's not just ad hoc, you know, as, as we can. It's, we have dedicated resources that are there in place because there's been a commitment from the local municipalities, we were able to build that service. So maybe, you know, as we have these conversations, that's something we might want to keep in mind is, you know, what kind of agreement or arrangement do we have between ourselves so that we can build that service and provide it consistently as opposed to just as needed and as we can help you?
Thank you for that. And I guess this next comment goes to our CIO. I do see that there's a value to MOUs, even if they're not, not solely to be restrictive, but to encapsulate or capture the intent. And I think of other things where other tasks as approved may be included, so, but to establish that baseline, I think is important. So that's to Madam CIO. Is there anything else from Mr. St. Olm? Thank you very much. And library services, Ms. Luck.
So through you, Mr. Warden. The library services, we have over 40 staff. We have 15 branches through SDGs county, and we have, on top of that, four express depots that service the patrons. Our goals are set out in our own strategic plan that was formulated for the years 2022 to 2026. That aligns our goals, mission statement, and values. So under availability of service, we have, as I said, 15 branches. And those 15 branches have certain core hours that are on our library website. If there's ever an interruption in those core hours, a notification of that variance is posted for patrons for the disruptive service. We have strategically placed all our branches so that no patron needs to travel more than 30 minutes to access the library branch. For our technology, we provide high-speed, effective, reliable wireless internet for all patrons at our library branches. And our library branches are also equipped with PAC stations, so our public access stations, which is essentially a work desktop. Our library branches are also equipped with duplication services such as copying, printing, faxing, emailing. For our lending services, we have access to integrated library services for our patrons. So what that essentially means is that there is a catalog in which our patrons can access through our website to view our content and to place holds. Once they have placed a hold, we have a fast turnaround for the reserved items through our mobile service courier vehicle. So one staff member is always assigned and he goes through all the branches throughout the week to deliver the items. Once the item is delivered, the patron has access to online renewals. And they also are emailed notifications for when that renewal is up to date and when that item expires and is due back at the library. Once the item has been returned, the item is shelved daily. We specifically cater to various demographics, being children, senior, and teen at our libraries. So under the children's services, we have a designated children's area in all our branches, complete with a children's collection, and staff offer children programming. For our senior services, we have special formats for seniors, so audiobooks and large print books. And we also deliver our collections to senior and nursing homes, as well as to those who just can't get out of their home as well. And lastly, we have teen services, which has a designated teen area within our branches. And that has contemporary and popular books, along with teen programming delivered by our staff. And we also attempt to involve teens, either through community hours or even a teen advisory group. And lastly, our collection development, we provide a large range of different formats for our collections, be print, digital, physical, or system-wide electronic resources such as databases. And all of these are for different age groups and cater to different reading genres. We provide stock levels that are appropriate to the number of residents residing in SDG counties. And for every book that goes on the shelf, we try to take a book off the shelf so that we keep our current collection up to date, such that 50% of the collection is no older than five years. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Luck. Questions, comments, thoughts? Counselor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Excuse me. How, how many members do you have right now? And how do you kind of manage that? Because I know that membership, is it called membership? It expires every year. Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Warden. I'm not sure of the exact number of memberships that we hold. I know that our online, we can register people online or through branches and they'll receive an email notification saying that their membership will be expired. And the reason that we have that expiry, because it is a hindrance and it would be easy for us to just say, you're, once, once a library member, always a library member, but it's to ensure that the fees are collected so that you won't get automatically renewed unless you pay your fines.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Dencham.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you for the presentation. And I'm a big believer in the library. It provides really unique experiences now than it did when I was, when I was a child. Can you remind me, how do we kind of publicize, let's say, to schools so that the children are aware, families are aware of what's available, not only just to their local library in the distance? But we have maker labs in certain areas. We have, I've heard robots and stuff like that from my grandson, he loves those, in Chesterfield that come on a regular basis. But what do we do in terms of advertising and letting the, say, school kids know that these types of services are available if they're prepared to drive a little bit farther to, to a different branch of the library?
Through you, Mr. Warden. We do school outreach, so we'll go to speak with the principals for each neighboring school that's adjacent to a library, because we've seen that the schools that wish to do class visits are the ones that are within walking distance. So with that being said, schools routinely come to the library when it's good weather and the children can walk easily to the school. And they do like a story time predominantly.
Just supplemental, if I may, I'm just wondering whether or not there might be an opportunity then, because I don't know whether every school has a local library and whether or not they get a visit from the library that helps them understand where the closest one is, where the specialty, specialty services might be, like, like the maker lab or something like that. So that may be something we'd want to consider as well.
Further discussion? Well, I look at maybe Counselor Broad or Counselor Landry or Counselor McDonald or myself. We all sit, the four of us are on the library board. And just to the rest of the fellow members of council that aren't on the library board, the topic of discussion every meeting is how do we promote? How do we support? And it's, this is one, much like the, the roads department, that goes right across the SDG. And the, the effort of this, of the library board is just that idea that you're speaking about. We, we go through those thoughts and how do we encourage others, those that aren't connected to the library, to become connected? So the, the service, level of service that's being devoted towards the lower tiers, it's almost strictly towards the lower tier. And to your thoughts, Counselor Dencham, how do we reach those areas that don't have a library down the street and the things that can do? And we see that throughout the summer at our events. The library pop-up tent is, is present, the library staff are present. And it's, I've always, I've always as well enjoyed the library and I think it does a fine job. And, but we're always looking at ways to better what we deliver. Counselor Broad.
Yes, thank you, Warden. Through you, Ms. Luck. At our previous meeting, we approved or reviewed a flyer slash document that captured how many members we have, what our average amount of lending was, et cetera, et cetera. When do we expect to publish that document? That will answer a bunch of the questions we just heard.
Through you, Mr. Warden. I believe that document is up on the website. I just don't have access to it right now, but it is, it is published and it was. I just don't have access to it right now, but it is published, and it was, it does document the number of patrons, it documents the number of capital collections that are used along with digital collections, and it capitalizes on all these very interesting statistics through the annual survey of the library.
And further, as I think more and more about the library, we have Cassie Macdonell, our communications person. It was a discussion about how do we make better use of the tools at hand than we would think of Todd Lihoe, and, but the amount of information that is ready to be put out to the public would be overwhelming, I think, for one person, so we've, we have an in-house communications person supporting us and supporting all of us, but with supporting the library system to promote those ideas and to utilize, best utilize the media available. Thank you. Anything further, anything further from me? No? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Luck. At this point, I suggest we take maybe a ten-minute break. I know one of our counselors has to leave, and I do trust that the next few will be a little bit longer in time, and I don't want to have you hear only half of it, you'll hear none of it. So we'll take a ten-minute break. Thank you.
Thank you, Warden Fraser and Council. So there's three divisions within Planning Economic Development Services. I'll start with planning. One of the main ones is maintaining the official plan. So in SDNG, we have one official plan instead of seven separate plans that we need to update in each municipality, which saves a lot of costs and time, not only making sure it meets provincial policies, but also managing countywide studies such as a natural heritage system, population growth projections, area studies. Some of them are done by consultants if it's a specific area expertise. Most of the general policy updates are done in-house by our staff. So in addition to the policy, we also do development review. So we have about 200 applications between official plan amendments, severances, subdivisions, and other types of applications. So we do circulation, attend public meetings, prepare conditions, prepare deeds, stamp plans, and resolve disputes among agencies and with the public. And also, similar to other departments, we have a kind of regional role in terms of meeting with our SDG counterparts and counterparts in other counties and across the province, sharing information, meeting regularly with your planning staff and working together and to make sure we're all on the same page. We also offer municipal-specific services. So for three of the local municipalities, we offer services on a fee-for-service basis. And the report just kind of describes some of the services we offer, and it depends on the needs of that municipality. It's charged hourly, but depends how many staff they have in that municipality or what their needs are, how many applications. In economic development, the focus is on, again, regional priorities such as the RIP, Regional Incentives Program, doing marketing and branding countywide, highlighting certain businesses or things like local hospitals, business retention and expansion, workforce development. So looking at countywide labor market issues and what can be worked on with the colleges and other levels of government. And again, liaise with provincial and federal agencies. A lot of times, they're not going to go to all 450-plus municipalities. They'll go to the county and we'll disseminate that to the local EDOs. Finally, there's tourism. Again, we work with RTO9, the volunteer groups, fair boards. We do promotions such as the SDG Discover Guide, and this year we'll be partnering with Cornwall on a joint guide to market both here, Ottawa, along the 401, New York, across our region. And you may have seen tourism videos as well on television or before movies. We operate the SDG Historic Jail, not only summer tours and working with our students, but also renting out to movie production companies and private events and those type of things. Those students also go out to local fairs and promote anyone going to the fair to come see other parts of the county. And finally, we have tourism grant and signage programs that we run every year as well. So that's a quick summary of the services our department offers to the public and municipalities.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Questions, comments, thoughts? Counselor St. Pierre.
Thank you, and through you, Warden. So I was on council in 2014 to '18, took a little break and came back. And I will say that I've noticed a big, big difference from the planning services from my first term to this term. It has greatly improved. I think there's a great benefit of continuing to collaborate with our local municipalities because, and I'll say it again later on, but it's a direct link to development within all of the SDNG counties, not just the local municipality. So I just want to put that out there to say that it's a big improvement. You guys do a good job, a great job, in my opinion. And we need to continue that direct collaboration because, again, it's a direct impact to all of us in SDNG, the businesses, the residents, and so on and so forth. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Further, Counselor Broad.
Thank you through you, Warden. Going to ask a question and a comment. My comment is super, super pleased that South Dundas with our planning services, as we are one of the municipalities that does engage from a planning point of view. So super happy with the staff that work with us daily, weekly, monthly, whatever it may be. And super been excited over the last year to learn on the economic development side and the tourism side how much activity we are and how much more we potentially can do in the exciting events even date my county. In the newest videos, the regional doctor video is excellent. But my question, Mr. Young, is what's your total staff level, number-wise?
Sure. We're eight staff total, four specifically dedicated to planning, one of those positions vacant, one for tourism, one for economic development, and then two, myself and our administrative assistant are split among the departments. So eight staff total.
Thank you. Counselor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I will echo Counselor St. Pierre's comments about the value of the planning services that you offer, particularly to North Glengarry, and we certainly appreciate it. I do have a question about capacity. You know, it's kind of been a bit of a theme today. And you don't have a memorandum of understanding. It is just municipality by municipality. They're not like the same contracts or anything like that?
Through the Warden, the contracts are, it's a similar format, but then it's the same contract with each municipality, but then it's as needed. And then if there's a project that we felt might be beyond our resource, we might have to kind of look at, does it fit in this year's work plan or next year's work plan? Usually, we try and work with the CAOs on what the projects we're working on this year. And also, to be fair to the other municipalities, that there's countywide projects that we need to work on as well. So the day-to-day is a development review, attending council meetings, being in the office. But if there's special projects, then we'd have to work with the CAO, see if it's within our work plan for this year or we might have to make adjustments, or even if it's better off, in this case, to go to the private sector for a specific study. So we'd work with your CAOs on that.
And currently, that is, it's manageable?
Yes. Yes. There's a couple of vacancies right now, but hopefully, once those are filled, we'll be back on track.
Thank you.
Further, for Mr. Young. Thank you very much, Mr. Young. Mr. Gahan.
There's a beauty. Yeah. All right. So in terms of the transportation's levels of service, what I've tried to do is break it out into the various divisions that we have within our department, which is specifically operations, capital, we have GIS as well, services and forestry services that we provide. So what, I'm going to start on operations, and the reason being is really that's, I would suggest, the most impactful and the one that hits residents very directly in terms of services that we do provide. The capital side is maybe a little bit more what I would consider to be internal in the sense that we, like the collaboration with local municipalities, there's a little bit of, you know, I'm anxious to be able to share with council because I'm not sure if council recognizes the amount of collaboration that does occur on a Capitol Works side of things. So specifically, when I, as I get into the operations side of things here, what I tried to do with council compared to the report is I tried to break out essentially what was a level of service from a, like how it's measured in terms of policy or practice versus something that's required by law. And the reason I did that was because anything that's a legislative requirement from, I guess, from staff's perspective, that's a little bit difficult to change in terms of the level of service we do provide to the municipal, or to, excuse me, to residents. Whereas if it's a policy or practice, we have a little bit more discretion. And if council wants to get in those discussions about changing those levels of service, like happily, we can have those. And a lot of times, some of these operations that we're kind of briefly breezing through this morning are extremely complex and things that likely require, you know, if you're asking some pretty detailed questions on some of these things, I may have to come back with some more detailed information because, to be honest with you, it is, they are incredibly complex, some of the things that we do and how it can all interrelates with the operations we do have. So I'm going to start this off with sweeping, although you'd think I'd start with snow plowing based on the snow that's happening out there today. So again, there's two types of sweeping we do within the department. One is intersection sweeping, the other one is a street sweeping. So intersection sweeping is actually something that's more of a legislated requirement because we do have to maintain safe intersections. So we do sweep all intersections once per year, and that's just after winter maintenance has occurred, and you get a lot of debris, material, dust, gravel, which gets brought up onto the roadway. So we do that once a year, and then we also monitor it throughout the year and then sweep them on an as-needed basis. Usually around the fall, we do a little bit more of a comprehensive sweeping of intersections. You might have seen our sweeping unit out more recently. And then when it comes to street sweeping, and that's something we've actually with this council have implemented, which I think was a great regional collaboration initiative, is buying that street sweeper in the county, providing that service to not only county roads but local roadways. So we now have that unit that provides street sweeping. We do that on a cost-recovery basis whenever we're working off of county roads. It's once per year in the spring where the local Public Works Directors are identifying sweeping needs to be done. Would include actually local municipal parking lots and some other areas as well, not just streets. And then we do get requested as the year goes on from local municipalities to do that work. So I know that we are very soon, if not already, going into North Glengarry to do some sweeping to help with some leaf pickup and whatnot. So there's nothing legislatively that requires us to do that, rather, it's a, you know, a policy practice. And that's the distinction between the two. Patrolling and patching. So there are, you know, I've lumped these two things together, but they are services that we do provide. Patrolling is done on a routine and non-routine basis, and that's to identify and address hazards. And there is a requirement in the minimum maintenance standards, excuse me, to patrol our roadways on a regular basis. And just for council's information, what we are legislatively required to do is about 3,000 kilometers of patrolling per week to be able to meet our requirements under the minimum maintenance standards. And that's a function of the class of roadways we have. Generally, we operate class two to class five roads, so there's a certain frequency of patrolling that we need to do. And that frequency is essentially like we're doing about 3,000 kilometers of patrolling per week to be able to do what we need to do under the MMS. With patching, you know, there's a whole variety of different patching that takes place by our staff. It's potholes, shoulder drop-offs, and other surface discontinuities that we need to address. So we do do that, and often while we're patrolling, you know, if they actively identify something, they try and address it immediately just because there's no sense in driving back to the shop to come back out again and do something. So often the patrolling, you know, encapsulates some of the patching and other requirements that we need to do to keep the road safe. One thing we also do, which may be of interest to council, is we do keep a stockpile of material in our salt storage facilities, our nice large facilities, purposely built to have some specific kind of, we'll call it dry storage space, cold, dry storage space. And local municipalities have and do actively buy patching material off of us on a cost-recovery basis because we can store it inside, clean, dry, and we do have that occur, again, based on, you know, needs or if they're out of material and they're close by. So we do share that resource and that ability to do that. And if it's okay with you, Mr. Warden, if someone has a question, we can stop in the middle, I guess. Is that the approach you prefer to take?
It is fine with me if you want to stop and ask, have a question at any point. Just raise your hand and I'll interrupt, Mr. Gahan.
Thank you. For shouldering and shoulder grading, again, another activity that we actively do. There's the monitoring side of it again, which is a requirement that we are looking and documenting shoulder drop-offs on the roadways because there is a trigger point where after we have a drop-off of a certain amount, we do have to address it. And if we do meet that requirement or we do notice that we see a deterioration of shoulder, we do add new material when required. This is, again, required under the MMS, but it's often not, like we will see the deterioration of it. We don't actually, in all circumstances, wait until we reach that threshold. It's something we proactively do if it makes sense and seems to be a safety issue. Another thing we do is actually provide that equipment and resources to help local municipalities when they're also undertaking that work. So we invested, again, in a specialized piece of equipment to be able to shoulder effectively and efficiently. And whenever local municipalities are doing shouldering work, we have and we do frequently provide the loader, the shouldering, the piece of shouldering equipment and staff to be able to operate that and support the work that's done by the local municipalities. Grading is another shouldering activity we do. So we, in the spring and the fall, we grade all of our shoulders just to fluff them up again and make sure we have material up against the asphalt roadway. And so there is a requirement under MMS to deal with shoulder drop-offs. If we have a paved shoulder, we technically, as long as that paved shoulder exists, by definition, we meet the requirements of the MMS regardless of what's happening with the granular shoulder at the edge of that pavement. But that being said, we do need to maintain a material against the edge of asphalt just so that you don't get the deterioration of the asphalt. So we do grade material adjacent to paved shoulders on an as-needed basis. So as we see that material really start to fall off and some concern with the deterioration of the roadway or the edge of asphalt, we do go in and grade that back up. Weed spraying.
Mr. Don, Counselor St. Pierre.
Thank you, Mayor Warden, Mr. Warden. Question for you, Ben, on the shouldering. You, we had a lease agreement with South Dundas on lending the grader to us. I believe we provided some shouldering for the counties. How many kilometers, and you may have to get back to me on that, but just roughly, or maybe a percentage of how much shouldering work would have gotten completed or would have been completed by a local municipality that's using the grader versus, you know, your staff operating the grader and doing your own shouldering?
I will have to get back to you on that one in terms of what shoulders we identified in that agreement for the local municipality to grade on our behalf.
Thank you.
I'm just going to write that down because... For weed spraying, there are kind of two distinct activities that we do do with respect to weed spraying. One is the monitoring side of things on the road sides. We do annually review the condition and the weed densities on our road sides. And then with that, we do complete a full weed audit on a regular basis. Typically, it's been between four and eight years when we actually go through, look at everything top to bottom and make a determination kind of where weed pressures have changed, grown, gotten better, gotten worse. And we are getting to a point where we do need to do that soon. So there's the monitoring side of it, and we do provide some guidance and support to local municipalities when we do that work as well. And I think in the last weed audit, we actually did incorporate some more, it might have been a joint tender with local municipalities, that I'm not sure of. It's been a little bit since I've looked at that one. Roadside spraying is an activity that, that's a great example of an activity that the county actually runs on behalf of SDNG and local municipalities. And that's a soup-to-nuts type of activity that we're doing as a service. So we are doing all the MOE approvals, we are working with Public Works Directors to identify the roads that need to be sprayed, we're doing all the tendering, the award, the inspection, we're dealing with payment, and then dealing with residents' concerns and issues that might have come up over the course of that work. Doesn't matter if it's on a local road or a county road. Tree removal is...
Excuse me, Mr. Gahan?
Sorry.
That's fine. Counselor Williams?
Thank you. With regards to the, I mean, well, I'm actually jumping ahead with mowing, but it's related to weed spraying. So I know that the last council, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, was talking about guardrails and the, and kind of the mowing that goes on around the guardrails to manage the weeds and a desire to kind of reduce the amount of spraying as possible and then using more summer students in order to be able to accomplish that. And so I'm just looking for an update in terms of have you managed to reduce some of your spraying and increase the trimming, the cutting?
Yeah, that one's, I'll just quickly point it out, and maybe in a couple slides, I'll touch on that a little bit in more detail because I do talk about that. Yeah. So tree removal, there are kind of two types of tree removal that our staff manage on a regular basis, one being hazard tree removal, and the other one in the next slide is dead tree removal. And there's a distinction between the two. So our staff, our supervisory staff at the patrols are regularly monitoring the health of trees that are within the public right of way, looking for decay. And certainly with the Emerald Ash Bore and some of the other diseases that have affected trees, it's obviously a high-value and a high-importance thing to be watching. Whenever we do identify a tree that is a hazard, so something that presents a risk to the traveling public or to, you know, private property damage, something like that, we do schedule removal based on an internal kind of matrix that we've created to be able to identify when it's something we need to deal with or how quickly we need to deal with it. Whenever we do deal with that tree, we generally cut the wood and leave it at roadside for either the resident that's right adjacent to it or someone that's driving by to pick up. If that wood is not collected or if it just seems like it makes more sense, we'll clean it up either right away or within one week if it's remaining on the roadside. Whenever we're doing this hazard tree removal, we're chipping brush usually right away as well when the tree is removed. And stumps that are associated with those trees, they're really left on-site. And we address them whenever we have, for instance, reconstruction occurring or some kind of heavy activity occurring where we need that type of equipment to remove the stump. So it is, can be an issue for some residents to see a tree get removed and then a stump remain. So we do, there is a little bit of discretion exercised in terms of, you know, is it in the middle of someone's beautifully maintained front yard versus in front of a field? And our staff, you know, make some determinations. But it is really like that hazard tree removal, that activity is really governed by the liability associated with that hazard tree.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you. So you classified kind of two, the hazard and then the more aesthetic maintenance of dead trees that are happening near or at the roadside. I'm just wondering, on a trend perspective, are we getting more and more, like a huge amount of aesthetic, non-hazard-type tree, dead tree accumulation? Or is it holding kind of steady? Because over time, if we're not keeping up in some capacity, it's going to become a major eyesore. And what would be your proposal if it is getting worse? Should we just do kind of a one-time project and get a lot of it done? Should we just do kind of a one-time project and get a lot of it done and cleaned up and allow it to level off? Or should we increase the general level of service?
So, I would suggest, and I'm going to look over to my right here, and Derek, you can thumbs up or thumbs down me here. Certainly, the amount of dead trees continues to get worse and worse along the road sides. And again, coming back to that idea of the matrix and identifying ones we have to deal with, ones we can keep, there's a lot of work to do, and if we added a lot of budget to it, you know, I don't know if we'd ever catch up, but, you know, it'd help to start making a dent in what we have. The challenge is also that, like, the resource side of it, there's only certain, you know, if we're up near power lines, it's not our staff that are able to do that work. You need certified people and bucket trucks, and there's only a certain amount of that resource available locally. So, I think we keep the tree removal companies relatively busy already. And you have, or weather events like the ice storm that we went through, we're actually, like, we, like, I know I reported this to council, like, we had quite a cleanup after that, which, you know, not necessarily got us ahead in anything, but it was, I guess, a good way to catch up a little bit, perhaps? Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, the entire tree cleanup, like, budget we have was used just to clean up after that storm. So, I don't know if that's really answering your que... Like, we could put a lot more money to it, but I'm not sure we have the, you know, the, I guess, the capacity regionally to be able to deal with what's out there right now.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Definitely don't know what the solution is, but perhaps if there's a grant out there at some point in time that we could look for to do a major cleanup, so that we're not gradually, over time, getting, the aesthetic aspect of it is getting worse and worse, because we have to focus so much on hazard, that it's building over time. Maybe that's one way to look at it, is if there is some form of grant out there that we could hire on a one-time basis to do a major cleanup. Climate control-related, or something like that, maybe.
And it's fair, and it's actually a discussion we have when I talk about forestry, and some of the challenges we have even on our, you know, the recreational trails that are in our forests, and, you know, the good work Phil's been doing to try and identify, like, actually going through that exercise as well. You know, what's a hazard versus something that we can, it looks like crap, excuse me, looks bad, but, you know, it doesn't pose a risk to the people that are using our forests on this trail. So, it's a real, there's a balance there, for sure. On the dead tree side, so again, similar to the hazard tree removal, we're watching trees, you know, and identifying when trees are dead. Whenever we do have a request to remove a dead tree off of county properties, depending on the level of risk it poses, it may stay there for several years, and that's not an uncommon thing. We do, you know, identify it, we do have an active list going in terms of locations where we have trees that need to be removed. And then the process in terms of what happens when it's scheduled to be taken down remains the same as hazard tree removal. All right, to the roadside mowing and trimming, and again, this is an example of a pretty in-depth activity that our department takes, does in a given season, and I'm distilling it down into two sentences. But, you know, our, the service we provide is we're mowing all road sides, which is equivalent to, we're approximately 7,000 kilometers of roadside mowing that we do on an annual basis. When we started is based on when, actually, when weed spraying is done, because you do need to give that product time to take effect on the vegetation. So, depending on, you know, there is some discretion in terms of where we've sprayed versus not sprayed, and so we do try and work around that. But really, you know, that start is whenever we know that that product has taken effect, and that always, you know, backs up to when things start growing, and what kind of spring we've had, et cetera, et cetera. And our target end date is the first of October to be done fence-to-fence. When I say fence-to-fence, we're doing a swath first, so we actually go around all the road sides with a single width of the tractor. Then we go back, do fence-to-fence, and then as the fall kind of comes through, again, those areas that we might have hit first, we're going back and cleaning up, doing another swath, cleaning up intersection sightlines, all those kinds of things. So, it's not just one fence-to-fence, but there is kind of three distinct kind of visits to road sides that happen throughout this entire season. Legislatively, there's nothing that actually requires us to do this. This is something that's very much an aesthetic activity that we do. We have eight tractors that are doing it, and that's essentially, they're on the road full-time from, you know, from June until October, those eight tractors. And then back to the trimming, we do trim around signs and guide rail, which cleans up after the mower. There are some areas where, so we have, in previous years, we had sprayed guide rails to remove vegetation. The direction we received was to try and limit the amount of spraying we were doing around guide rails, and only spray wherever we have a legitimate, kind of, we'll call it a road safety concern, where our staff is at risk as a result of, like, proximity of guide rail to curves, or, you know, a great example is, you know, Hoople Bridge on County Road 2, where it's a very tight and high-speed environment, and some significant drop-off, or, you know, where we might have to do some spraying rather than be able to do with trimming. But generally speaking, our approach is, we're trimming guide rail with mechanical means, and if we can't do it with mechanical means, we're spraying. And that spraying activity is actually done as a joint tender, and again, another joint tender that we manage on behalf of local municipalities. Emergency call-outs, so we have staff available 24/7, 365 days a year, to receive and respond to emergencies that might happen on our roadside. So, that's anything from a road closure to catastrophic event. And generally speaking, within one hour of a call, we are able to have staff out on-site, dispatched, to be able to address whatever that concern is. Depending on the circumstance, of course, if they need a bunch of resources collected at the patrol garage, it might take a little bit longer, but it always depends on what the circumstance is. Road debris itself, there is a requirement under the minimum maintenance standards to remove road debris. So, again, we have staff available, the same thing, 24/7, 365 days, to respond to calls of service to remove debris from a roadway. Any debris that poses a safety hazard gets removed essentially immediately, so that, we coordinate whatever resources we need to be able to remove that debris from the roadway. Debris that doesn't pose a safety risk is usually left until the next regularly scheduled time of work. So, you know, we may get a call about a raccoon, dead raccoon on a roadway, and so the staff will determine, is it actually on the roadway, or is it on the shoulder? And if it's on the shoulder, okay, we're going to leave it until tomorrow morning, thanks for the call, and kind of deal with it right away in the morning. One, I thought, interesting thing that I guess I'll share with council, and it's kind of the, one of the more sensitive things we deal with, of course, as you see, like, pets, household pets that are on this, you know, that are struck by vehicles. So, one service we do provide in those instances, when it's obviously a pet, we collect that animal, bring it back to the shop, and if we do get a call where someone's wondering about a pet that has been struck, or had, you know, had heard a pet had been struck, we do keep it at the shop for a certain amount of time, that they can come back and collect that pet if they want to. So, doesn't happen very often, but it is, you know, I guess, a little bit of a above-and-beyond that I do want to point out to council, is a way to recognize some of the sensitivity around those things.
Excuse me, Counselor Dencham?
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Just to, so, thank you for doing that, that's, I like the compassionate route that you're taking there. Is there any kind of advertising that goes out, that, obviously, you wouldn't want to take a picture, but you'd want to say something to the effect, you know, there's a, an animal, what looks to be somebody's pet has been hit on this road, and a brief description of what the pet may look like? Just, because again, somebody may not even be aware of that, if that went out, could go out on Facebook. I know, I see a lot of posts on Facebook when somebody's dog is wandering the streets, or somebody's lost their dog, or whatever, and they may be curious.
No, we don't, we don't do that. I would imagine if there's a caller, that we might make efforts, you know, if there's something identifiable on a caller, we might make just personal efforts to try and identify, but we don't, we haven't in the past put that out. Not sure, like, it's so targeted to one household, I'm not sure a general broadcast would be effective, to be frank with you. So, that's my personal opinion, but certainly if that's something, you know, council wants us to start doing, we can certainly, certainly do that. Okay, continuing on Adopt a Road, which is a program that our department manages for, to recognize volunteers who are collecting garbage along road sides. So, we manage that program, we provide safety gear, we provide garbage bags to volunteers, we install signage to recognize the efforts of those individuals that are doing the Adopt a Road program with us. And another thing that actually is very interesting is a lot of municipalities don't have that in place, so we do provide a lot of support and input to other municipalities who are implementing similar programs, some of our lessons learned, you know, what works and what doesn't work for us. Getting into drainage, ditching, we do do a significant amount of ditching on an annual basis. We prioritize that work based on impact to the infrastructure, so is the lack of ditching potentially creating an issue with our road base? Like, if your road base isn't draining, your road actually doesn't last as long as it does if it has good drainage. So, impact to infrastructure, the benefit and the cost is what, kind of, three main things we look at when we're determining our ditching program on an annual basis. Improvements due to poor drainage or aesthetics, so if people are, you know, the water isn't really getting away in their ditch, but there is a good ditch there, and there's cattails growing, that's, you know, we do consider that, but that's the lowest criteria we consider and use to evaluate where we're doing our work. And generally speaking, and this tends to be true, whenever we do get complaints about ditching, you know, because it's flat and there's cattails growing, generally takes us about two years from the request, or that coming to our attention, to when we can actually kind of implement the aesthetic improvement to support that request. And I would say that, that's, you know, in my experience, that's pretty common, about a two-year waiting period. And so, that's how we manage ditching. On the municipal drain side of things, of course, that's governed under the Drainage Act, and so we contribute to any improvements that are undertaken in accordance with the Drainage Act, and the cost's a portion to us. When it comes to municipal drain improvements, or changes to municipal drains, obviously we're an assessed party into those drains, but we, as an organization, take a neutral position on it, so we don't, you know, vote in favor or against. Rather, the only time we would, you know, provide comment or input is if it, we have a concern it's going to be negatively impacting county infrastructure. On the drainage theme, continuing on cross culverts, so those are the culverts that cross our roadways. Our goal is always to maximize the life of cross culverts to the greatest extent possible. Our first approach is to line pipes rather than replace them. If it makes economical sense to put a liner in it, we will do that, because in the long run, that's usually the most cost-effective option that we can use to keep a pipe in service. If we cannot line it, it's replaced in a like-for-like basis, unless we are, it's identified that there's an upsizing or downsizing that would be required, or is appropriate. Whenever we have instances, and this happens, whenever we have instances where residents would benefit from some type of improvement as a result of a cross-culvert work, and I can think of some instances where farmers are, you know, tile-draining and looking for a deeper outlet. If we can accommodate the request without any cost to the project, we do do that, and we appreciate the communication and our ability to be able to work with residents. And if there's instances where the cost is actually going to add to the project, so an upsizing, for example, to accommodate a new drainage area that's coming through a pipe, that, you know, we'll work with landowners and offer to, offer to do that work at, you know, but they have to pay for that incremental cost associated with the project. And that's done through a cost-sharing agreement. Entrance pipes and entrances, so four entrances and entrance pipes, the cost of a new entrance, whenever there's a new entrance put onto the county road, that's borne by the landowner. And then the county takes responsibility for those entrances going forward, and those, well, sorry, those entrance pipes going forward. So, those replacements, or if there's a failure of that pipe and it damages the surface of the driveway, that's something that the county takes full responsibility for and repairs. Entrance widths and layouts that are reinstated are done in accordance with county bylaw, which is to match existing, or widen to conform to an appropriate standard, whichever is the greater width. And whenever we do, it is a permit required for an entrance, whenever people are installing entrances or doing major work to their entrances, we do review and approve those within 10 business days, generally speaking, and often much quicker than that. The procurement of pipes is done by SDG as well, that's something, a joint tender that we have with all the local municipalities and the city of Cornwall. So, for us, that means coordinating the initial order, issuing the tender, closing the tender, managing that whole process, awarding it, invoicing and supporting reorders as they may be needed. So, that's a service we're providing to local municipalities and our partners here at the city.
Counselor St. Pierre.
Thank you, and through you, Warden. Just on your cost-sharing agreement, is it just for the initial installation of the upsized pipe, or whatever, or is there its operation and maintenance and replacement, is that included with your cost-sharing agreements?
This is like a cross-culvert?
Yeah, cross-culverts you were referring to?
Yeah, initial installation is generally where we, you know, the cost-sharing agreement is limited to. The beauty of these pipes is it's often, like, you have a 50- to 100-year lifespan, so, yeah, it's, I think the, like, an agreement that carries on through that period would get lost in the sands of time, quite frankly.
Then Counselor Williams.
Back to ditching, just for a moment. With the new staffing levels that were approved recently, will you be able to improve the level of service for ditching to, sooner than two years?
Yeah, yeah, certainly, and that's something we've committed, we're going to come back to council and identify, you know, these areas. So, it's not only ditching, but in a lot of other areas where, you know, mowing's a great example, where we think we can get it, you know, that, we can achieve that level of service, but we can achieve it faster. So, that's the kind of stuff that we definitely are coming back to council and giving you that full detail in terms of how, you know, how we've been able to improve, how we've been able to improve some of the delivery times on the levels of service we provide.
And Counselor Lang.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you. I would, thanks Karma for the question, because I've been thinking about this all along through here, that I thought maybe this would have been a good point, since we're talking levels of service, for you to mention what your expectations are to how it was going to improve with the 5.3 full-time equivalents. So, I'm hoping that you guys have some idea here, like, you're not just going to wait until next year and just see what happens. I'm hoping you've got some actual goals, that you're going to see some levels of improvement. But I thought this might be the time to tell us.
Yeah, no, and, you know, again, I'll just come back to mowing, because that's an easy one, like, I hope I can come back to council in August and say, we're done our mowing. And usually, this is, you know, this is done in October. So, here's how having these extra staff have been able to get us to, because I like, to be frank with council, between August and October is when we get our most complaints about roadside mowing, because we haven't been able to finish everything yet, and that's when it's a little more noticeable that, you know, why have you done here, but not here, what's, you know? So, our expectation is that we'll be able to provide some of these, that information, that detail to council.
Counselor St. Pierre.
Thank you, Warden. Just for Counselor Lang, or to add on, Counselor Lang, I think, I think what you're asking is, can we get some potential proposed deliverables before we start the work? So, then it's a measurable, measurable item, right? It's a measurable report. If we feel that, you know, by August, you want to get your mowing completed, and it's October, at least, you know, we'll get that sense of what the goals are, and then after the season, we can get a sense of why we didn't meet the goals. Could be weather, it could be, just so we know, Director, because, you know, that's, we have to justify, and we should be justifying, why we're increasing our staff level by five, two, three, how many? And really, that should be part of discussions for any department that's looking to increase their staff level, is, give us, give us what the goals are, and why, and then, if we do approve the staffing, then let's, let's see what has been improved to justify the additional staff. And I believe that's what Mr. Lang, or Counselor Lang, is suggesting.
Okay, no, and that's fair, and I have no issue with being able to provide counsel with essentially, like, you know, as we get into our summer maintenance, like, providing some detail in terms of what our expectations are with the increased levels, or increased staffing levels, like, that makes total sense to me, and that's a great way to kind of set the benchmark of what we need to achieve, or what this is going to provide us to achieve this year, or 2024. Continuing on storm sewers, we inspect storm sewers once every three to five years, and then catch basins, we're cleaning catch basins once per year in the springtime, we'll clean them out, and that's a preventative maintenance activity that we undertake to be able to ensure that our storm sewers remain clean and functioning. Signage, again, big, big, a big activity that we undertake regularly. We do inspect regulatory and warning signs to confirm their reflectivity, that's a requirement under the minimum maintenance standards. Missing signs are replaced, and those are hazard, or, excuse me, warning signs and regulatory signs, they're replaced in accordance with MMS requirements, and the... And the response time often depends on the sign. So like a curve, a curve ahead sign, you don't necessarily have to replace as quickly as a stop sign that's been knocked out. So, you know, it depends on when that takes place and what kind of resources we have, but we certainly comply with MMS in all circumstances. To do that, we have to maintain a regular, a reasonable inventory at each patrol garage to be able to, we have quick access to those, those signs. And we do share that inventory with local municipalities, and that's a back and forth. And same thing with posts and, and some of those things. And similarly, the city of Cornwall is often, you know, they're out of posts and they need to come to St. Andrews and take some posts from us, and we'll, we'll get them back on the next, the next reorder. And, and I guess one thing to keep in mind with when we're talking about signage is that every intersection on a county road, we, the county, are responsible for all the regulatory and warning signs that are at those intersections. So even though it might be a local roadway, it's, we are considered the senior jurisdiction at the intersection, and we're taking full responsibility for all that signage there. So I've made a distinction between those regulatory and warning signs versus information signs. So those are your street signs, signs that Hallville's up ahead and that you turn left here to get to the Highway 401. So that's more your information type of signs. And similar to the previous ones, we're responsible for all of those at county intersections, regardless if it's a county road or a local road. We have also installed advanced roadside names, and you might have seen that through, the, the implementation started through the previous term, and we finished, I think, everything now. Where all our advanced roadside names are up at, along county roads, and that's for every intersection. We do repair, replace and repair missing signs based on manufacturers' fabrication and delivery schedules. So we often get, because these are all customized, they're not just sitting on a shelf. So we do need to reorder them. And sometimes, you know, through the pandemic especially, some challenges with the aluminum signage, like the backing plates that the aluminum signs were made on. So we've had some delays in getting them. We're starting to catch up, but certainly it was a challenge over the last little while. Hamlet signs, so those are the SDG branded hamlet signs that you may see as you drive across the county. We do install those at our costs at all settlement areas identified within the county official plan. If a local municipality wishes to go with their own branding, that's okay with us, and that's done at a local municipal cost. South Glengarry, as an example, has recently installed some very, you know, attractive, different branding than what the county hamlet signs look like. Similar to a lot of the other activities we've talked about, the county manages the entire procurement lifecycle of signs for not only the county, but all the local municipalities. And there's a significant amount of effort associated with the, the organization and tendering of that work. It's, it's quite a, quite, quite involved. You'd think it'd be pretty easy to order signs, but it's, there's quite a bit of coordination because there's thousands of different types of signs out there that people, that our, our partners need. And last thing on signage is permitting of private signs. So we do, through bylaw, control the installation of signs located on private property when it's adjacent to a county road. And that's only within 45 meters of the centerline of a county road where a permit is required. And those are usually reviewed and approved within 10 business days. And the purpose of, of going through that process is just to maintain safety of the road sides. We don't want to see signs installed on private property that somehow impact the safety or visibility of an intersection or something like that.
Counselor Dencham.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Is there a list of signs? I'm thinking more, you know, the hamlet signs, excuse me, the hamlet signs or things like that where the public can be aware of that the sign is on order and is pending delivery or something like that, so that somebody can, can understand that the issue has been recognized, it's in the works. If, if you could provide a estimated date, even better. But I know based on what your, your comments are, that may not be feasible. Is there anything like that, again, just so that the public can understand that the issue has been recognized and that it's being addressed?
So we don't have anything like that in place, but that's certainly something we'll, I'll talk with Todd about in terms of how we want to communicate that out to the public a little bit more frequently, because it is, yeah, I can appreciate that, and we do get calls. Oh, this sign is broken. Yes, thank you, we know, we've ordered it, we're waiting for the manufacturer to bring it in or to deliver it. And yeah, so fair enough, that's, that's.
Yeah, thank you, because there are a couple of signs in, in my area that I, I know I've reported to our public works, but where it stands, I'm not sure. And I don't know how much work that's, that's going to entail, but I suspect you must keep a list somewhere. And if it's easy to make it public facing, that would be, that would be great. Thank you.
No, that's a fair comment, for sure.
Counselor Bud.
Thank you, Warden, through you, Mr. DeHaan. Tourism signs, I believe, are third-party executed. Is that correct? Do we have a bylaw that states their reflectivity? The font standards and the similar colors of blue that should be represented on each sign? Because I find that Mr. DeHaan has done an excellent job of standardizing the SDG signs, but these signs are not standardized and very different on each sign itself.
I'll have to actually throw that to Director Young, because that's a program that's managed through his, his staff in tourism. So I know we, we support the installation of, but the actual procurement of and, you know, that, that, we, we help with the, the contracting of the work too, but it is something that's managed by tourism particularly. Yeah, and I know, just to add to that too, I know as things sit in the sun for a while too, like, you know, it's, it's very hard to, you do get that degradation of the color as well, which makes, you know, you have a new sign on top of an old one, starts to look a little bit out of place, for sure. For sure. All right, so plowing, another activity that we do on a regular basis. Thankfully, not really today, but it's not far away. So our, our, our level of service we're providing the public is that we're providing baronwatt driving lanes within five hours of the end of a storm. Generally speaking, we're dispatching our equipment at the start of an event, and we continue until the, we meet that target maintenance level. The road class does not pertain to how, you know, this, this level of service. So all roads are treated the same. If it's a county road, it's treated the same. This is our goal. We do have some identified commuter routes where we get priority dispatch from the yard. Those are a little bit shorter in terms of their turnaround time, and they jump the line to be able to get out onto those commuter roads, because usually the commuter roads see a little bit higher volume of traffic a touch earlier than other roads throughout SD and G. So there is, there is a little bit of a distinction between some of those roads versus the rest of the county roads. But generally, again, speaking, it's still the same level of service that we're providing to the public. Once the storm is done and we've provided our level of service, we do get into the cleanup activity associated with the plowing, which is winging back. And often, you know, that's, that's a very important activity and something that, if you're not in the, the winter maintenance game, may not realize. But pushing those wings, the winging back and pushing those snowbanks back is a very important activity, because it helps with your drifting snow, it helps with any kind of issue you might have with melting snow, flooding, keeping ice off of the roadway. So there is a requirement under the MMS in terms of how quickly we're supposed to be dealing with snow on a roadway and ice on a roadway. And I can assure council that we well exceed that minimum maintenance standards in all circumstances. We do have two different shifts. We have a day shift and a night shift. Day shift has more resources on the roads, and we do have more cars on the road. So there's a, there's a direct link with making sure we have enough resources on the road to be able to address the winter, or winter conditions. Night shift, a lot of roads, we don't have great volumes. So return times, there's, there's less resources on the roadway. We're certainly more stretched at nighttime, but we're able to still, you know, maintain open road network and provide the service that we need to provide. And we do provide plowing, essentially, we're at staffing levels that provide plowing 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
Counselor Dencham.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Can you give a little bit of commentary on any collaboration you do with lower tier in terms of snow and whether or not that's just kind of impromptu or whether there's something that is, you know, set out through an MOU or spoken, a verbal MOU?
So we do have a combination for, and I'm going to specifically start on county roads. So we do have a combination of contractors. So the contractors being GIP, who performs, who are assigned some of our routes. We have also have MOUs with local municipalities who function essentially as contractor on some of our routes as well. So there's that, that kind of formal, I guess we'll call it a formal relationship that we have with local municipalities. Informally, I know that there are instances where we do get support from local municipalities if we're in a bind, and I think of the big winter storm during Christmas last year, where the North Dundas provided some resources to help us push some, some pretty significant snowbanks back on County Road 31. And similarly, if, if the municipality's in a pinch, we're, we're able to kind of help shift some resources to help out or even lend some equipment. And that's probably one of the more common things we end up doing on a, on a very much a phone call basis. We need a hand here, there, everywhere. So, so there's, there's a little bit of an informal back and forth, and we, I think we both benefit from that, that good working relationship we have between the patrols and the local municipalities, for sure. Okay, salt. So the SDG counties administers the purchase of salt for the region, and this is a pretty significant contract. We're, you know, this is for local municipalities as well as the city of Cornwall. We do store, we have capacity to store salt within our salt storage facilities, particularly in Green Valley and South Stormont, so in Winchester, or, excuse me, St. Andrews West. Those shops were purposely built to provide additional storage for North and South Glengarry as well as South Stormont. I, I would say South Stormont, just by virtue of having a shop as close as it is to our shop, where they are our best, our best customer. And we do sell salt to them on a cost-recovery basis. And just they're, they're, they're doing a treated salt mixture within their, their shed, so they can buy the straight salt from us and do what they need to do to provide, you know, to get the salt, the salt mix that they want in their shed. And that happens all throughout the winter months. And whatever they pull out of our, our, our patrol, a storage facility, is charged back to them on a cost-recovery basis. We also store a limited amount of abrasives, so that's stone dust, that kind of thing, within our shops to assist with traction and extreme cold events. So if it's to the point where the weather is so cold that we can't address the ice with salt or it's, it's really slow, we'll add some abrasives into our mix. And that, again, is available for local municipalities to come into the patrol, the salt storage dome if they need a little bit as well, because it is stored inside. We do operate two anti-icing units, and they're going to be operational today, to be quite honest with you, in advance of tonight's cold weather, where they're out applying anti-icing product to bridge decks. And the reason being, particularly at this time of year, you still have some residual warmth in the ground, but whenever you have a bridge where it's exposed underneath to the cold air and the humidity from the warmer water, there is a greater potential for black ice to form. And so in recognition of that, we do have those anti-icing units out dispatched and trying to address those, those conditions, which is generally at this time of year and as winter ends. Equipment and vehicles. At the administration building, our department provides two vehicles, which are used by administration staff to be able to attend meetings with a corporate vehicle or go to training or whatnot. We do provide, we own, the transportation owns and maintains the big library service delivery van that you see driving around. And we do, do own that and charge the library back on a cost-recovery basis. And it's the same, essentially, the, an established rate over the life of that vehicle. And that helps, I hope it helps, with their, you know, their budgeting process and being able to smooth out the impact of that kind of vehicle coming into and being used by that department. We do regularly share equipment and resources with local municipalities to assist with emergencies or unforeseen circumstances or just to even provide support for their regular work. And I've identified a couple of those examples. And, and on a procurement side, we lead joint tenders for pretty much everything that we're buying from an equipment perspective across SD and G. We do issue permits under their operations. They're generally, they're all available online, so it's all an online process now. And they're usually reviewed and approved within 10 business days and often very quicker, and often quicker. How are we doing here? Keep going, okay? On capital work side, I talked about joint purchasing, so I won't get into specific details here in the interest of time, but we're the lead on a significant amount of joint purchasing that takes place in any given year. This is the one I wanted to spend just a little bit of time on, just to bring it to council's attention. And this is something that's developed over the course of my career here. The contract administration services we provide to local municipalities has grown significantly in my time here. Where before, we might do a joint tender, but, you know, kind of leave it to the local municipality to look after the work actually taking place. We are now taking the lead on many of the activities that happen locally from a, from a capital perspective, you know, particularly hot mix paving, micro-surfacing, skin patching, culvert lining, weed spraying. And the service that we're providing is confirming quantities. I know we've been out with some of your public works directors in more recent times just getting ready for next year's work, so helping to develop budgets and develop, you know, the appropriate treatments for certain roadways. So we're providing that technical support. And we're, once the work is taking place, we're actually administering the contract right from start to finish, checking quantities. And then we're actually paying for, for the work, believe it or not. I don't know if, if council's aware of that. Whenever the work's taking place, the contractor has a direct relationship with us. As the work is getting completed, we at the county are billing back, but that's a, that's a service that we are providing. And I know that, you know, thanks to Financial Services for helping with that. But it's, there is quite a significant element of work associated with just that coordination of the payment and making sure that, that work gets done. I won't get into too much detail, detail here, but there is a variety of other miscellaneous support that we provide from the engineering side of things. And I'll point out that we do have, we do provide access to municipal 511 and the local weather stations to all the local municipalities to help with their decision-making, as well as.
Counselor Dencham.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And it may apply to this one, but definitely to the previous one in terms of purchasing support. I'm just wondering whether or not, or to what degree many of the, so, first of all, I think it's fantastic that, that you do help coordinate some of the purchasing, because it usually results in a better, better cost, which trickles down to the independent municipalities. But I'm wondering how much of that just kind of grew organically or whether it's been properly planned and whether or not we kind of need to look at that. Are some municipalities not necessarily taking advantage of that? Are some municipalities potentially leveraging that way more than others? And therefore, the kind of, there's a cost imbalance? I, I don't want to use the term fairness, but at the same time, you want to be sure that this is properly coordinated and centralized? Should we be looking at that, I guess, as, as more of a centralized approach? Or is it already a centralized, established centralized approach at this point?
I would say it's equitably provided to everybody. The difference is that North Stormont, for example, may not be doing paving in a given year or may not have paving on their radar for a capital project, so therefore are not, you know, part of that joint tender or, you know, leaning on our staff to provide some expertise and guidance in terms of this type of paving application would work well here versus not here. So it's equitably provided to local municipalities. It just depends on what, I don't think, and I could be proven wrong, but I don't think all local municipalities necessarily have the type of paving program, annual paving program like the county does. So, so it just really depends year over year, who's taking advantage of certain things versus who's not. And I say taking advantage, but who's, I guess, you know, working with us in terms of that technical support. It's grown organically over the years. There may be some value to, to, to formalizing a little bit more, but I don't necessarily, like, I think it works now, and we're able to manage that workload. And quite honestly, it kind of grew from, you know, we'd hand off some of these contracts to the local municipalities to deal with, but then they'd have some issues and the contractor wasn't being treated the same locally as they were at the county. And so that created some inequity between the county's contract and how we were managing the work versus locally. So I think it's, in some ways, it, it has created work for the county, but it also has made it easier in a lot of ways too, by just saying like, contractor, you're dealing with us and we're going to manage this work, you know, through the entire lifecycle of this project. So, so there is value to, it's my long way of saying, there is value to maybe formalizing a little bit more, but I do think it works and I, you know, I'm happy, I'm happy to be part of, of what we're doing, for sure, and our department is.
Supplemental, if I may, Mr. Warden. So it's great. And again, I'm not, I'm not vying for one versus the other, because, and I think it's an overarching theme that I'm hearing throughout all of the departments, not just yours, Ben. Perhaps your, your department has had the opportunity to kind of look at growing a coordinated or centralized approach better than some other departments. But it's definitely going to be a balance. When we're talking about MOUs across here, from my perspective, it's always going to be a balance of fairness. be a balance of fairness, capacity management, expectation. Again, some municipalities could end up trying to treat you just like a contractor, whereas you're really, and also flexibility, because I think we need to recognize that if we're using some resources, makes you a little less flexible in your own. And then just the opportunity for the counties to pitch in from time to time. I know when, sometimes when we receive support at North Stormont, there's a level of pride that I feel coming from the county member who's kind of stepped up and helped us out. And I don't want that to go away by over-formalizing something like that as well. So it's, it's an interesting balance and I think it kind of plays to the comment Counselor Lang made about, you know, we want to be sure that everybody's being properly compensated, but at the same time, there's something, something positive and organic about the way it is right now. And I wouldn't want to over-formalize it, but it does sound to me there may be opportunity here and there to formalize some processes, whether that's in, in your department, transportation or whether that's some, across some of the others. So just a general comment there.
Thank you. Counselor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Sort of related to, to your comments there, you know, speaking of joint purchasing, tendering, whatever the case may be, with regards to the Regional Waste Management Group, because, you know, that speaks to much of, of, you know, the conversations today in terms of getting that group going. Have you made any headway as that, in terms of real partnering?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I know we're meeting, we had originally intended, I would say, a more, like, maybe quarterly meeting schedule and right from the outset, we said we got to meet more because there's lots of activities that we want to get into and, you know, without, you know, I guess in the interest of time, like, if we want to come back and I can provide you with more detailed information, but I would say absolutely, absolutely that there's, there's a lot of value coming out of that, that working group, for sure. Okay, continuing on, oops, excuse me, from a projects perspective, we talked a lot about these things, so I'm not going to get into any detail here. From a building maintenance, so they, our division looks after the administration building and so we manage any building renovations that take place here. Our responsibility is to make sure that office and public spaces are comfortably, can be comfortably occupied and that they're accessible. And we're managing as well as the interior, interior, the exterior landscaping and we're ensuring the heritage nature of this building is preserved and enhanced in the greatest extent possible. Getting into forestry, we do annually inspect and document hazards and provide, you know, access to our forests and the recreational trails. We're partnering with stakeholders to provide access into some of these forests. We are managing our forest operations to conform with forest management plans that we have and we're maintaining a certification for our county-owned forests, so there is a certification that all of our forests meet. And we're continuing to develop and foster partnerships with stakeholders to further enhance the opportunities and use of our forests. We have staff that, our forestry staff are certified chainsaw safety instructors, so we are providing chainsaw safety training to not only county staff, but local staff. We are addressing and resolving any concerns related to the misuse of county forests and properties. We're collaborating with local municipalities, private landowners and other stakeholders to increase the number of public forests. This staff, this staff is responsible for the delivery of roadside, roadside tree plants, so that's supporting transportation as well as local municipalities in identifying and the installation of trees. And also the noxious weed, weed control is in this division as well, so they are responding to any complaints related to noxious weeds within five business days of receipt of that complaint. Last but not least is the GIS service we provide. So I guess very quickly to sum, sum up some of the work that our, and services our GIS staff are providing, we're executing and maintaining the license and enterprise agreement for this service on behalf of the counties and all local municipalities. We're hosting SDG Explorer, which is a geo-referenced mapping program used in the day-to-day work that happens not only here, but at the local municipalities. We're creating maps for stakeholders and other users. We're entering into data sharing agreements between SDG and other consultants and developers who are doing work in SD and G. We're creating applications which are used by county staff and local staff on a daily basis to support day-to-day work. And an example I'll give you is we've created an application that's used by Water and Wastewater in South Dundas. And, you know, it's like, where are the valves located and how many turns does it take to close and open a valve? So those are the kind of applications we're providing and then that's all being stored in GIS where anybody can access it and use it. Vital link with emergency services is done through GIS, so they're providing critical data used by emergency services and they link to other platforms. So asset management software and other things is linked through GIS to be able to provide and do the work we need to do. That's it. Those are our services.
Thank you, Mr. Gahan. Is there anything else for Mr. Gahan? Mr. Bro, Counselor Brod.
Yes, through you, Warden, although we've commented on budgetary items and some staffing expectations going forward, I want to say of all my travels throughout eastern Ontario in the last year as a counselor, SD and G has the best county roads around. Soon as you hit the road sign for the next county, you can tell you're in a different county. So kudos to the Rose Department and previous councils for making sure we do have good county roads. So more to come, I'm sure, but thank you for the service we have had had.
Thank you for that. I'm sure Mr. Gahan appreciates that. Counselor St. Pierre.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden. And I just want to compliment you on your GIS, the company I work for, has a couple projects within SD and G that we've utilized that information, some of that information. And for SD and G, we are miles ahead of others in be, in able to provide that information to development engineers and it's a great asset. And I know it's something locally that we are also doing on local level for Iroquois and Morseburg. So, you know, when developers come in, you know, there's information readily available for them, so that should save time, hopefully time and energy and enhance, it should hopefully reduce cost, or maybe not reduce cost, but not increase development costs, which is a little bit of a link to the cost to develop, to the cost of housing, enhance why we see enormous housing costs throughout. So I would say that's, it's a good, good program and we look forward to you guys increasing and enhancing it as you go.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, we'll move on to the ASE.
Yeah, I won't dwell on this one. Just to provide it council with a copy of a report that was presented in March of 2022 about the automated speed enforcement. The things I note that have changed compared to that previous report, and this is based on my best understanding, is that there are some other joint processing centers which are coming online and that's due to the rapid expansion of this, of this program. And so that should make it easier to be able to get processing done because as I understood it, the city of Toronto was capping the amount of tickets they were willing to process from municipalities from outside the city that were coming in and using that center. And I believe, or my understanding is there's more than one photo radar camera supplier because the cost for the unit can be pretty, pretty high. And having several suppliers also, you know, it helps with the competition side of, of that, of that program. So the remainder of it, I think, is the same in terms of how, if council wanted to go about looking into this and implementing such a program. And I guess I'll leave it to council's discretion on where we want to go from here.
Thank you. Questions, comments on the automated speed enforcement, some thoughts on that? One thought I have, or question I have, Mr. Gahan, is I believe whenever you presented this in the past, did we have an idea or did you present to us, the, the previous council, the number of vehicles that would need to be ticketed for it to become, to, to bring cash into the municipality, if you would? Not that that's the goal, the goal is to reduce speed, but, so it doesn't become burdensome on the taxpayers that aren't speeding.
Yeah, I think we had some informal discussions about it. I don't have that number in front of me of how many vehicles would need to be ticketed for it to become revenue neutral. I think my, my message to council will be and always will be, you have to look at this as the, like, don't look at how many tickets we would need to issue, but rather, are you ready to take on the cost of this program? Because if it's successful, it means that we're paying the full cost of that camera and no revenue's coming in because everybody is following the speed limit. And I think that's, you know, my, my personal opinion and what I share with council is that that's the mentality we as, we as an organization should take. And if we're comfortable with that, then that, that makes sense to initiate this type of program.
Yeah, and I thank you for that because that was the caution delivered, that this would be not cost neutral. And, and I think that needs to be understood that in some areas where there's not a lot of traffic, that will become a cost. And, and as soon as those three or four or dozen speeders have been ticketed, it will continue to be a cost. Counselor McDonald and Counselor Dencham.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I would just suggest that we hold off on this until we see another rural municipality come forth and do it. Let's not be the first. I don't know of any locally that do it, so I don't want to lead the charge personally. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Dencham.
Yeah, I'm kind of sitting in the same spot right now. If I, if I remember some of the statistics that we were provided from Mike's presentation, many of the issues were animal-related, 80% were animal-related, which I don't know how, to what degree speed may or may not have, have played a, a part in that. Intersection collisions, whether or not that would make a significant difference there. And I think from my perspective, I would almost want to have those statistics reviewed with Inspector Hemrick and have him come in and almost recommend that this would be a good addition to an overarching strategy before I think I'd want to take a step forward on my own. At this point, like I say, it's, it's, it sounds good, but it may not actually achieve what we, we hope it would achieve. I'd want some expertise to kind of assure us that, that it would reach those, those goals before I'd want to take a chance on it.
Thank you. Mr. Gahan.
Thank you. Just very quickly on Counselor McDonald's point, I know Renfrew County is seriously looking into it and it's something that's a topic that we often talk about at county, our regional county engineers' meetings. So I'll keep on top of their implementation of that program if they proceed with it.
Thank you. And if there's nothing else from Mr. Gahan? Thank you. We'll move on to the vaccination policy. Madam CEO.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So I just wanted to put this forward to council. Currently, we're doing some recruitments. This is one item that we've still been regularly asking for and I believe that in most of our, five of our six local municipalities, the policy has been rescinded. It would be my recommendation that the policy is really not relevant any longer, given that it's not the same public health threat that it was several years ago. But however, if that, if that situation were to reintroduce itself, then I think we'd want to follow public health, come back and propose a different policy to council. So I'm looking for just a general direction from council. If council is supportive of rescinding the policy, then we'll bring that back formally at our upcoming council meeting. And for our current recruitments, we will no longer ask for that proof of vaccination.
Thank you, Madam CEO. So just a show of hands that those are, of those in favor of rescinding the policy. There's the direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions on that topic, we're going to move to number six, discussion and additional items. And Counselor McDonald.
Just if we could have administration bring back a report just about perhaps changing the election of the warden to August so that we, the, the elected warden could attend some meetings with the current warden just to get up to date on, and up to speed on issues.
And as, if I may, Counselor McDonald, as you mentioned that, it makes me think about compensation as well for the warden-elect to attend those meetings. Do we have consensus on the first item and the second item? Okay, thank you. I thought it was. At this point, Madam Kirk, if I could have the resolution.
It's moved by Counselor Laundrie, seconded by Counselor St. Pierre, that the committee adjourn to the call of the chair.
All those in favor? Opposed, seen none, that's carried. Thank you very much. Thank you to all the staff that were involved in preparing.